So I just want to come up with a basic thought on what I'm hearing. It's like this one. No, in fact, it's only required to be pretty happy. That's why I asked Brian that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't some Philly or some other issue that that would impact the the summer risk.
Okay.
And it is, but it doesn't have three by three. No, no, we're. Exactly. You didn't need to be here tonight, so it would have been a waste of your time. All right. All right, I will right now.
Are you ready? Are you still testing? I'll just see if it works. I think so, unless we. All right, good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to the Gilbert Planning Commission meeting of August 7, 2013. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple. Alternate Kyle Paul.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have item number four as approval of the agenda, Vice Chairman?
Chairman, we would like to go ahead and move a couple of things around on our agenda. If we could please, we would like to move items 21 and 22 and 23 and 24. I can tell you what those are. GP 13-10 with the zoning companion zoning case Z 13-21 and GP 13-08 and the companion zoning of Z 13-18 to the consent agenda this evening, staying in numerical order so that the UP is still ahead of the general plan and zoning for its companion case.
Great. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve.
I second.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to agenda item number five, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Do we have anybody here tonight that wishes to speak under those pretenses? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to administrative items. Agenda item number six is the opportunity to appoint a chairman and vice chairman of the planning commission. The term once appointed will begin next month. With that, do we have any recommendations?
Chairman.
Motions? Vice Chairman?
I would like to recommend you as the chairman again for a year of the planning commission.
Thank you.
I move to approve that.
I second that.
Oh, second? A motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Vice, do we have a motion for Vice Chairman?
Might as well stay on this. I move to approve Commissioner Joshua Ailer as the vice chairman for the next year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion approved. So we have Jennifer Whitman and Vice Chairman, or now Vice Chairman Ailer, as Vice Chairman. Agenda item number seven is appointment of a zoning hearing officer and alternate zoning hearing officer. Do we have any motions, recommendations?
I move that Commissioner Peterson be the chairman, or I'm sorry, the zoning hearing officer.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sorry?
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll announce that for you. She's asking who is seconded.
And Chairman, I would go ahead and ask that Commissioner David Cavaney be the alternate zoning hearing officer for the next year.
Okay, do I have a second?
I move.
Second? Second by Commissioner.
Bianchi.
Bianchi, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, guys. Agenda item number eight is appointment to transportation master plan steering committee. I think Bridget has expressed some interest in that position. So I would recommend that we select Bridget Peterson.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you get that? Second by Commissioner Bianchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine, the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of July 3. Do we have any comments? Commissioner Bianchi?
I did not have any items to change. Did anyone else?
Okay, did anybody else?
If there were none, I would move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Margot, I'm going to abstain on that because I wasn't here at that meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10, which is the public hearing consent portion of the agenda. So consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. With that, we have agenda item number 11, S 13-04, which is a preliminary plat for Warner Groves. It's on the consent agenda for continuance to the September 4 meeting. We have agenda item number 12, which is UP 13-08. It's the Circle K store located at the northeast corner of Pecos and Gilbert Road. We have UP 13-09, which is a conditional use permit at the northeast corner of Higley and Chandler Heights Road. UP 13-10, which is American Orchard Senior Care, located at Lindsay and Guadalupe, the southeast corner. We have case Z 13-16, which is the Fulton Homes at Cooley Station. As a matter of fact, we have, I think this is probably the most appropriate time to bring this up, but we have an amended, this is the one that's for. We have an amended staff recommendation that includes an amended stipulation. The amended stipulation.
You're getting waived off on the amended stipulation.
Oh, no, they're not. That's why they're not pulling it, because they're not going to do the four.
Oh, perfect.
Madam Chairman, that was in case of the discussion that may occur. It was a proposed amendment to the stipulation, but we did not pull it.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So as is.
All right, so we're just approving as is then? Or recommending approval as is? And case Z 13-19, which is an amendment to the ordinances for the Bridges Plan Area Development. We also have agenda items number 21 and 22, the companion general plan and zoning case for American Orchard Senior Care. And case, or agenda item number 23 and 24, which is the general plan amendment and zoning case for the subdivision proposed west of the northwest corner of Higley and Williamsfield Road. With that, we will open, because do we open the public hearing? I don't have any cards for anybody wishing to speak on these matters. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on any of these? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for possible motion.
Chairman?
Yes.
Before the vote, I just need to, although I will be voting on the consent calendar, my vote, I will not be voting on agenda item number 11, which I will have to be deemed to recuse myself from. My company that I work for has an interest in that project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as discussed by you. Just a minute.
Okay, I have a motion by Bridget Peterson, or Vice Chairman Peterson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on. Let me reorient myself. To the public hearing non-consent portion of the agenda. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the item is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So I know I've got a couple of cards from members of the audience wishing to speak, I think, on a couple of items here tonight, but they're located at the back of the table. So if you wish to speak on an item, please fill this out and bring it up to the round table up here and they will get it, get it to us. And then we'll bring you up to the dais, or up to the podium to speak once we get to that agenda item. So the first agenda item is 17. It's Z 13-17, Layton Lakes Parcels 11, 13, and 15. It's to amend the ordinances and rezone approximately 105.6 acres located within the Layton Lakes Planned Area Development. And with that, we'll invite up Mr. Nathan Williams.
Thank you, Chair Whitman, members of the planning commission. As you, let's see if this. Guess that doesn't work. All right, I'll try it this way. Okay, so Layton Lakes Phase 2, southeast corner of Queen Creek and Lindsay Roads. This is an aerial of the site. This is a master plan community approved back in 2001. Build out, it's going to be around 1,300 units throughout the whole thing. Part of it's in Gilbert, part of it's in Chandler. You can see that city boundary there. Chandler's on the southwest corner. Much of Phase 1 is developed to the north of Queen Creek now. And then the highlighted portions you see here are Phase 2. The parcels in question, there are five parcels in Phase 2, and the parcels that are part of this rezone amendment are parcels 11, 13, and 15. Parcels 11 and 15 are zoned SF 7, and parcel 13 is zoned SF 10. And so I'll go through a little bit of the requests. I'll break them down a little bit more, let you know the details. So parcels 11 and 15 are located there to the north. The applicant has requested an increase in lot coverage. Right now, the Layton Lakes ordinance allows for 45 and 40 for one and two-story homes, and, which is the same as our land development code today. What they're requesting now is for 47 and 42, I know the applicant, I spoke with them yesterday, they recalculated based on a recent approval of our open air structures ordinance. So you may recall, it was just recently implemented by the town. They recalculated their lot, their plans on these lots. And now it's somewhere around, I'll let the applicant give you all the details, but I think it's around 46 percent, just under 46 percent for one story that they need now. So that request may change a bit based on what the applicant provides for tonight after recalculating with those open air structures. However, that said, they were still asking for a little bit more of an increase in lot coverage than what is allowed today through the ordinance and through the land development code as well, just for comparison's sake. So those two, those requests are for parcels 11 and 15. And that's really the only request with this, for parcels 11 and 15, the SF 7 portion. So just an increase in lot coverage. As you may note in your report, staff's not supportive of those requests. But it's your discretion on how you feel about that slight increase in lot coverage. The applicant, or I would note that it is applicable to the primary dwelling unit as well as open air structures. It's nothing, it's not just the open air structures. What the applicant's having issue with is that through the interpretation of the open air accessory structures ordinance that we recently approved, there's a requirement, a base zoning requirement for an 8 by 10 covered patio, back porch if you will, that that's required by code and in the Layton Lakes ordinance, actually, that you've got to have a back porch essentially of 8 by 10 or 80 square feet. So that, though, although it may constitute an open air accessory structure that's attached, by the definition, it doesn't count towards that increase of 5 percent that, you know, is allowable through that ordinance. So it has to count towards the base zoning, the base lot coverage per the zoning, which is 45 percent. So that probably is more confusing than not, but you can let me know what, if you have any questions on that. Tried to simplify that, but, all right, now, let's go back to the aerial here. So parcel 13 located down there in the southeast or southwest corner of the site, this is zoned SF 10. What the applicant is requesting on that is two things. One is lot coverage. So they're asking for an increase in lot coverage for one-story homes to 45 percent, which staff is supportive of. What is allowed by the Layton Lakes ordinance now is lot coverage of 40 percent for one story and 40 percent for two-story. This is contradictory to the current land development code, but it's another one of those situations where a PAD was a bit more restrictive than what the code allows today. So what the applicant's asking for is to make that kind of whole and increase the lot coverage of 45 percent for one-story homes. Staff's supportive of that request for all the lots within parcel 13 there. And then the other request is for front setbacks related to parcel 13. Again, SF 10, let me go to this chart, actually. So here's a, here's a chart that's in your staff report. Essentially, it gives you what's existing per the ordinance for Layton Lakes, and then what's allowed in the current LDC, and then what the applicant is requesting. Essentially, what is allowed by Layton Lakes ordinance is 25 feet front setback for site entry garages only, and then 30 feet for pretty much everything else. What's allowed in the land development code today is 20 feet for side entry garages and detached garages and so forth. It's spelled out in the land development code. And what the applicant is requesting is for a 15-foot setback for the diverse housing product in Layton Lakes, which is side entry garages, detached garages, forward livable, it's down there at the bottom of your screen, and 20 feet for everything else. So that is the request. The applicant can give you a lot more detail as to why they need that. It has to do with their plans that they would like to see on those parcels. You know, rear setback, you know, increasing the lot, the backyard for homeowners, future homeowners, you know, there's a three-foot stagger that's required. So all those things taken into account, they have, they can't make it work with their current plans. But again, he can get into much more detail on that. Staff is not supportive of this request and would be supportive of a change in the front setback to, you know, more along the lines of what's allowed by the land development code today, which is 20 and 25 feet versus what's allowed in the Layton Lakes ordinance, which is 25 and 30. But the request for 15 and 20, staff isn't supportive of. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Fuller?
Thanks, Nathan. Was there, on the setback issue, was the thought that staff wasn't supportive of it, were you concerned about just kind of the row effect that when you push houses that close to the street, you kind of drive down and just, it's more of a row build? Is that, is that what the concern was?
Commissioner Fuller, yeah, that, I mean, that's one of them. You know, larger lots typically mandate larger front setbacks. That's part of it. I know one of the arguments is that, you know, they would like everything to kind of tie into each other, and if the SF 7 and 8s get a 15 and 20, they would like a SF 10 to. However, you know, one of the main, you know, issues that staff has with it is it's simply, you know, the land development code doesn't, it allows for, you know, a reduction in front setbacks to 20 feet with things like side entry garages. But in no, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's a few instances in town with a PAD that maybe a SF 10 has a 15 foot with a, some type of, you know, side entry garage, but very few, I would imagine. And it's just what's allowed in the code today is 20 and 25, and we're comfortable with that, but anything in excess of that without, you know, what staff feels is enough justification for that, which, you know, we just don't feel that there's anything that would warrant such a deviation.
Thank you. And I also, I meant to email you this, and I apologize, I did not, but my next question is, is there any chance on the setback issue, would there, would staff feel any differently? And I haven't discussed this with anyone, so I'm probably going to catch you by surprise, but could you impose some sort of staggering requirement where maybe not every house got a 15-foot setback, but you got, you know, that way, I mean, have we done something like that before where?
Commissioner Fuller, actually, you know, they would still have, even if it wa, even if we approved a 15 and 20, they would still have to utilize the required stagger, the three-foot stagger that's required in the land development code. So even if, you know, parcel 29 was a 15-foot setback, the next one, even if it was allowed to be 15, it would have to be 18.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that. My question was more, I think they're doing it because, and I may be wrong, but my guess is there's certain, they have certain product that will only fit with a 15-foot setback, and I could be wrong. And that way, you could give them a floating, like, X percent of the lots can have a 15-foot setback. That way, they could sell the product on certain lots and.
I guess my response to that would be, I'd have to ask legal if how they would want to word something like that. Also, I just, I feel like enforcement of something like that through our building department might, might be an issue, but they could create a lot of analysis that may, may address those sorts of things if.
And it may be a nightmare for them to administer anyway, and I haven't discussed that with them. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Cavaney?
Well, I actually had the applicant's representative visit with me about this, and so I certainly understand some of the intent of what they want to do. But I have to say that I agree with staff's recommendation on these setbacks, because I do have that concern about these large lots having such close proximity to the property lines. And I think the purpose of the zoning code requirements of these regulations is to help balance these larger lots against the smaller lots and how they create the row feel. So I tend to agree with that, but I do agree with the recommendation to allow some leniency to the regular land development code and not hold them to their PAD necessarily, because we obviously allow it elsewhere. It should be okay here. But I do need some explanation, more explanation on the 8 by 10 backyard patio. If you could spend just a minute more helping me understand that, because I don't.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Cavaney, they, I wish I had a plot plan with me, and the applicant might have him with him. But essentially, on any, any new home that gets built in the town, regardless of it's Layton Lakes or anywhere, you're required to have a back patio, a back porch. And so one of the things that came up is we need to, you know, we need to have a minimum standard of what that back porch consists of, minimum size. And that's an 8 by 10. So an 80-square-foot back porch, you can have, you can have it larger than that, but you can't have anything smaller than that. So that's where that foundation is. And I know you just joined the planning commission, and I don't know if you were, if you read through the open air accessory structures ordinance or not, and that's kind of where this, this issue came from, is the interpretation of that. So that's, I think, attachment, maybe six of your staff report, which the zoning administrator interpreted that that 8 by 10 back porch is a minimum requirement of the land development code or of a home. So it has to count towards your base lot coverage, which is, say, 45 percent in this case.
Okay, so it does have to be included. That 80-square, 80-square-foot minimum must be included in the 45 percent. It cannot be in that excess 5 percent.
That's correct. You couldn't take that, and that's where, I think, the point of contention for the applicant is that, is that interpretation of that recent open air accessory structures ordinance is that they would like to, I believe, use the whole 8 by 10 as that extra 5 percent in addition to the 45 base. They would like to use that, but interpretation is a little more strict in that, that's, you know, it's required by the land development code, so you can't use it in excess of.
And it's got to be included. That's interesting. Okay. That's helpful. While I have the floor, let me just, I wanted to regress and say one more thing about the setbacks, too. When I spoke with the applicant's representative, they were willing to stipulate that only single-story homes get to within, I believe it's 15 feet of the property line. But they couldn't be sure, they couldn't, they wouldn't restrict or didn't feel comfortable restricting how many they would allow to be single-story. Obviously, if they have a product that's selling, they want to sell that product as much as possible. And so we couldn't be confident that we wouldn't have all single stories all approaching the street with the required stagger up against the street. So that's why I think it would be hard to administer a stipulation like that. It just wouldn't help us be sure we were getting enough variation. Yeah.
Commissioner Ailer?
Going to the setback question, and could we do something, if it was possible, doing like a percentage of open or closed projection into that setback, so we could set it at, so we don't have the row canyon, so like if we had like 30 percent or whatever the magical number is that we're looking at, but only a percentage of the house, so we don't have this big row of houses that we could look at, maybe a closed projection into that setback. So the setback stays, but then you have a percentage of projection.
Commissioner Ailer, I, you know, I'm just, I'd want to, I'm not sure I could come up with a condition on that, but I'd be open to, you know, if we wanted to create one, we could, I think, myself and legal and Mr. Millelo could, could, you know, give you an opinion on that. Just kind of not really sure of what, what we could say there, what we could condition there right off the top of my head, but it, I mean, potentially.
I think we could probably craft around it if that's the commission's purview.
Just seeing if it was possible to that.
Chair, Commissioner Ailer, I just would point out that the land development code already allows within the site regulation section of the code, certain things to project into the required setbacks. So we already have a list of different elements on buildings, on residential buildings and other buildings that are allowed to encroach into that setback. So I guess we'd have to identify some other things other than those that would also.
Right, I'm looking at, because those are more open projections that I don't. I'm looking at, because those are more open projections, but I don't know everything in those projections. But I'm thinking of an actual closed projection, which would be basically a garage or part of the house, that for an X percent, that could be in that setback. It doesn't change the setback, but it looks at it as, it's more to give that stagger look and not having the whole frontage in creating, if you create a reduction in setback, you could bring the whole house to that setback, where this would say there's a certain percentage, so you could still keep a staggered effect in the building.
Understood.
Any other comments, questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Just one question. We go back to the interpretation on the open-air structure. When they talk about the minimum of 80 square feet as a minimum, was part of the interpretation because the likelihood or the possibility of that potentially being enclosed by the homeowner?
Oh, Commissioner Bianchi, I don't believe so. And we could ask the zoning administrator himself, but I don't believe that was part of the thinking on that. I think it was just simply that it's a code requirement, and so that way, it should count towards the minimum requirement for lot coverage of the code.
And by code requirement, you mean into the PAD?
Well, in the PAD, but in this case, it's the same in the LDCs, too. They match 45% for.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. With that, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant up. If you could give your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Brendan Ray, 702 East Osborne, Phoenix, Arizona, here on behalf of the applicant, Lennar Communities. From our perspective, this request is a very simple, straightforward one, to amend two development standards within only three parcels within Layton Lakes. As many of you know, Layton Lakes is an 832-acre master-planned community that, as staff explained, encompasses, it's outlined in red there, and encompasses both the city of Chandler and the town of Gilbert. Lennar has been the primary driving force behind its development and has worked very hard to create a high-quality, highly amenitized development that is a desired location for residents, both within the town and Chandler and elsewhere to locate. And we believe that they've accomplished that through the development of phases one, up in the northern part, everything north of Queen Creek, up in this area here. They've made the improvements to the community center, which, if you haven't had a chance to drive by and see it, certainly one of the classiest community centers that I think I've had the opportunity to be a part of within Layton Lakes. As I mentioned, they want to continue to build high-quality homes and make this a preemptive development. As staff indicated, we're talking about the southeast quadrant. And Lennar believes that these minor modifications to a slight increase in the lot coverage and a reduction in the front yard setback will not affect the high bar, the high quality that's been established, that they have established in creating this project. We're certainly appreciative of the discussions that have taken place with staff over the course of the last little bit relative to setbacks and lot coverage. There are some things that we agree with staff on, and there are other things that we don't agree with them on. But we believe that when you take a look at the Layton Lakes community as a whole, and certainly these particular parcels, that these requests are appropriate under the circumstances. And we would request this body's approval, a recommendation for approval, consistent with the application that we filed. Now, let me get into some of the modifications that have been made since then, and we can get into a little bit of discussion about the open-air ordinance, which I know was a question. Again, when you're looking at it, and just to identify the sites again, parcels 11 and 15 are zoned SF7. Between the two, there are approximately 200 lots that make up 11 and 15. Parcel 13, we're only talking about 69 lots within there. And as you look on this layout within parcel 13, which is this parcel down here, you'll see that, as in this parcel and throughout many of the parcels within Layton Lakes, that there has been careful planning going into laying it out, such that the street network isn't a gridded-out pattern. There are curvilinear streets, short street lengths, cul-de-sacs, other opportunities to break up the diversity of it, so you don't have the gridded-outlook that you find in older parts of, in older communities. As has been explained, the lot coverage issue, when we initially filed this application, there were a number of floor plans that we were having challenges with fitting on these lots. And Lennar has had challenges as it's developed other portions of this community with respect to the lots and what goes on there. If we were to take a look at this plan, and I can talk a little bit more about the open-air ordinance, because at the time we filed the application, we were not aware of the open-air ordinance that staff had taken through. As was discussed at the last commission, there was a question about, well, how does the open-air ordinance apply and what goes on there? And through discussions with staff, that ultimately led to the interpretation that Nate Williams mentioned, it was determined that if this pink area, or excuse me, this orange area right here, the covered patio, that roughly 80 square feet of that patio, which would meet the definitional requirement of an open-air attached patio under the ordinance, I have to count that 80 square feet with the underlying base lot coverage. Now, we had some spirited discussions with staff about whether their interpretation was correct, and I believe that we are both right in terms of what the ordinance would allow as far as accepting out, whether it is the entire covered patio or whether it's everything but 80 feet. And staff chose to go with the 80 feet, and we're certainly not here to argue or debate whether staff's right or wrong. We can see it both ways, and I think, given the time and the discussion, we could sit down, and you guys could see it the same way, too. But be that as it may, we are where we are. So what ends up happening is that when we initially filed this, there were a total of five different lot plans that didn't meet the lot coverage requirements for both parcels 11 and 13 and 15. With respect to parcels 11 and 15, which are the SF10, there were two lots that didn't meet it. And after analyzing the open-air ordinance, I'm left with one housing plan, which happens to be a one-story building. It is Lennar's next-gen product, a product that has been well-received by the town, something that the mayor, I know, is pleased of. This next-gen home doesn't fit, and we exceed the lot coverage requirements, which are 45 for a single story, by basically 0.7%. And that 0.7% represents the 80 square feet that I have to include in the underlying base. So when you take a look at things with this one plan for parcels 11 and 15, I'm looking at a request, a very minimal increase to the lot coverage. I know our application initially requested 47% increase from 45. Today, we can amend that request to that it be only 46%. So when you look at it, it's certainly something that we are meeting the spirit and intent of the open-air ordinance and what it was intended to do by providing covered porches, by providing covered patios for the neighbors. Definitionally, the covered porch in the front, because it's not open on two sides, does not qualify under the open-air ordinance, and so that area must be included within the base lot coverage percentage. So when you take a look at that, there is precedent within the town for increasing lot coverage. I know one of the cases that we worked on for Fulton Homes down in Freeman Farms, going some years back, similar situation, similar lot sizes, similar challenges with the product. Ultimately, the commission and council were able to approve, again, a minimal increase in the lot coverage, similar to what we're requesting here tonight. So that's the lot coverage issue with respect to parcels 11 and 15. There is a similar discussion when we look at parcel 13, which is the SF10 lot, which is, again, these lots down here, the 69 lots. Again, similar situation, similar discussion. The only difference that I would point out between the two different parcels, the SF7 parcels and the SF10, is that the SF7 parcels, 11 and 15, are mixing ones and twos. There are five plans, two of them one stories, three of them two stories. When we go down to this parcel 13, Lennar has designed single-story floor plans only for this parcel. And that is something that we would be willing to stipulate to tonight, that all homes within parcel 13 be single-story. That's their plan. They feel that, from a buyer perspective, that the customers want single-story homes, they want larger square footage, and they want to be able to have that. So again, when you look at the discussion similar to the one that we just had, the lot coverage, again, is, you know, I've got to count 80 square feet towards that. When I look at what that does to two of the plans that causes me problems, I'm at 40.7 and 40.2%. And so I know staff's recommending and supportive of increasing the lot coverage within parcel 13 to 45%. If that's the commission's desire, we think that's great. We don't believe we'll ever get to 45% lot coverage, only because of the lot size, the constraints with setbacks, front and rear and side and all of that. But again, we believe that this slight increase is certainly something that's not going to be noticeable to the residents. Certainly, it's not going to provide any meaningful, I mean, even the people living in the homes won't notice it. And so we would certainly request approval to increase the lot coverage to, in parcels 11 and 15, to 46%, and then in parcel 13 to 45%. However, if the 45% is something that the council, or that the commission's not comfortable with, we would be willing to go to 41% as well. So let me just stop there and see if there's any questions on that, because I'd like to kind of take these issues separately, if that's all right with you, Chairman Whitman. Talk about the lot coverage, and then we can come back and talk about the front yard setback.
Thank you. I'm glad you just summarized, actually, what your request was, because I was getting a little confused and making numerous notes for questions to ask later. So just to recap, for 11 and 15, parcels 11 and 15, you're asking for 1% increase or up to 46%?
Correct.
Is that a 1% increase in lot coverage?
Chairman Whitman, yes, that is a 1% increase in lot coverage.
And then for SF, or for parcel 13, you can live with 41%, but the request currently is 45%?
Chairman Whitman, yes, that is correct.
And all single-story in parcel 13?
Correct.
Okay. So any questions for the applicant?
The single story is not yet stipulated anywhere. That would have to be stipulated here.
Correct.
I do have a question, though. Roughly, and I can't see, it's not clear enough for me, what are the sizes of these homes in square footage, roughly? 3,500?
It...
3,000?
The homes... Bear with me one minute. The homes within parcel 13, square footage wise, range from roughly 3,600 square feet to about 4,600 square feet.
Okay. And in the smaller parcels, the 11 and 15, how big are they roughly?
The 11 and 15, I didn't write that down.
Okay.
But my guess is, is that we're probably roughly 2,500 to probably 3,600, 3,700.
Okay. I think my question from that, what that helps me understand, is this point, for example, in 11 and 15, we're talking about 0.7% is all you're out, right? And if I look at a 2,500 or 3,000 square foot home, we're talking 20 to 25 square feet of this home. That is a challenge for you guys. And I think my question is, rather than change the zoning, can we change the plan to go 25 square feet less? Would that be possible? Has that been considered? Has that been looked at?
Through the chairman, Commissioner Cavaney, I'm not sure that I understand what it is that you're talking about. As far as the lot coverage for these parcels, the difference, the reason that the request is there is, really amounts to 80 square feet. If the 80 square feet of this covered patio, if I include that as part of the open-air attached patio, I don't have any problems. All these homes satisfy the minimal lot coverage requirements, and I'm not talking about lot coverage tonight. But because of the interpretation that's been made, and I have to include 80 square feet within the underlying base lot coverage, that's what's kicking me over.
Right. And I understand that, and I understand, but you're over by, with those size homes, if it's 0.7%, you're over about 20 to 25 square feet on those homes. And I know you have to count the 80. Fair enough. I understand that, and that's the interpretation of staff, and at this point, I support that not knowing anything else. But I'm just wondering, if you've got a challenge making this particular plan fit, have you considered reducing the size of the plan?
Through the chair, Commissioner Cavaney, that's not something that we've considered. It is a substantial process that involves a lot of time, expense, and money to be able to go through these particular homes, particularly with these being next-gen homes that Lennar takes additional time and effort to develop. There are floor plans that have been well-received by the residents. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe these floor plans have been built elsewhere within Layton Lakes. And so they know it's a good product. They know it's something that's desired by the consumers. And so that's not something that we've looked off, trying to...
Okay. That's fair.
Can I just say something real quick on that? Having dealt with this issue before, at first glance, I completely understand what you're saying. You would think, hey, let's just reduce the house by 25 feet. And that makes sense. What's difficult for, and what I think Brendan's trying to say, is you really got to view it, these production home builders, it's like a conveyor belt. It would be going to a Ford dealer, or Lennar would, a Cadillac dealer or something like that, and saying, can you just reduce the car by foot? Well, that throws the rest of the house off. It really, their trades build a certain type of house, they build it all over the valley, and to shrink it down, you got to process plan change. And it's much more difficult than you would think, just with reducing something by 25 feet. It really affects the house and what they build, and you just kind of got to view it as a conveyor belt on, and I'm trying to persuade you one way or another, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote on this, but that's the effect of...
I understand, no.
Yeah, moving something 25 feet.
I very much understand that view. I do. I just, I think my hesitancy is that as we continually look at these types of requests and changes, we have to consider the precedents we set. And that the next people that stand in front of us say, well, you allowed, what percent for them? We want to. And so that's my concern, and that's why I come from that vantage at this point. And again, I'm not sure where I'll vote with this. I realize what you're trying to do, and I think you have a wonderful product from what you explained to me. And so I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would invite the applicant to provide an explanation or at least acquaint me with your product. You say next-gen. I'd like to be more familiar with what that really means and what you're trying to accomplish with this product.
Really, I think we're, he's still giving his presentation, so I know that you're kind of asking generally, maybe a concept-wise, what next-gen is, and I think that that's probably sufficient enough to answer. But I don't know if we should be getting into the details of specific plans or products.
Well, the reason why I ask, it would help me understand their motive and why they're asking for this, is because if they consider this a product that's special or different or has some advantages, it might help us to understand that.
Counsel, do you see anything? Any issue with that? Special counsel? Extra special counsel? Extra special counsel? Either counsel? One of the councils?
I think a brief explanation of why the home size was not considered, which I think we've already had, would be sufficient, and maybe if you want more detail, that could come after the meeting.
Yeah, I think because we're not specifically approving specific plans...
Right.
It's hard to kind of get into the details of specific plans, but I think generally, concept-wise, yeah, I think an explanation is sufficient.
Through, through the Chairman, Commissioner Powell, the next-gen product is multi-generational, multi-generational living under one roof. There still is one roof, one address, one meters that go to the house, but it allows for the aging grandparents, or the, you know, boomerang kids that just got married and are looking for a place to stay, to come back and live. They have their own separate quarters that, in the town of Gilbert, they have a little kitchen area. They don't have a range within that, they don't have, I don't believe a dishwasher is allowed, but I may be mistaken on that. But the concept is to provide, you know, the best way to think of a next-gen is kind of a mother-in-law suite or a casita on steroids. And that's, that's probably the best way to describe it visually. We see a lot of homes with casitas, with mother-in-law suites and things like that. Just think of this as, as that on kind of steroids.
Okay. Thank you.
May I just add something?
Commissioner Cavaney?
I think, and I appreciate that explanation, and you'd shared that with me also, but I do think one of the reasons that that explanation may be helpful is that if we're going to break precedents here, having a distinction in the product can be one of the rationalizations for that. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think the hard part comes where, and if there's a distinction in product, and we're not stepping to a specific product, then, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, we're giving an approval on something without the legs underneath it.
But it just gives rationale. But if someone else goes up and says, we have a regular home, just a regular single-family home, we'd like to do the same thing they did, we can say, well, there was a distinction, and that's why we justified it.
Right. But if, if for some reason this product fell through, or they didn't develop for some reason, there's nothing that's tied to the approval, and so I think that's where it becomes an issue. I get, I get what you're saying, though.
All right.
But, I mean, if that, if that ends up being the case, and we give maybe special consideration to this, that we might need to consider stepping to specific plans in order to, which I know staff loves, to make it a little more binding and less, and more difficult for just somebody else to jump in and take over the reduction in setbacks without providing that sort of product.
Very fair. Thank you.
Sorry. Do you want to continue with your presentation now?
Don't worry. Happy to continue, and if we need to discuss other things about it, I'm certainly happy to go back. Part B of the request, again, has been, has been discussed by staff. The reduction in the front yard setback applies only to parcel 13. And I want to make it clear that we're only talking about 69 lots. As you can tell from the layout and design, there are curved linear streets, there are short street lengths, there are cul-de-sacs, there are a variety of site planning things that have been done, that makes this subdivision, from our perspective, a little more easier when you're looking at it. It's one thing to talk about an entire community, spread over 832 acres, that's multi-jurisdictional, but again, the reduction in the front yard setback only applies to parcel 13. And I'm certainly not aware of any other place within Leighton Lakes where they have agreed to stipulate to building only one-story homes. And that is the stipulation that is before you, that, again, will reemphasize it, we would be happy to stipulate to only single-story homes being built in that. And the reason I think that that's important to understand is because a lot of time when we're talking about setbacks, we are talking about the street scene. We are talking about what, what residents will see and feel as they drive through this. And as, as I indicated, and I think as this commission has picked up on, homeowners today are more interested in having a rear yard. This community, the state of Arizona, isn't necessarily one where a lot of people are hanging out in their front yards. They want to maximize the amount of rear yard space. The other thing that happens when we look at this particular parcel has been mentioned, we run into problems when dealing with the mandatory three-foot staggering requirements. So when we look at maximizing the amount of rear yard space and complying with the rear yard setbacks, complying with the staggering requirements, we run into plans that don't fit. And so our request is that it be to 20 feet, that the front yard setback be 20 feet for a forward-facing garage, and 15 feet for a, you know, diverse housing product, you know, side-entry garage, livable space forward. We know that this request for our setback is consistent with other, other setbacks in Leighton Lakes, both within, within Chandler and other portions of it. If you were to look at the larger map, in particular, parcel 22 over here in Chandler, something that we just rezoned, where the lot sizes there are 90 by 140, so a lot bigger than what we're talking about here. In there, the setbacks are 15 and 20. In most of the developments, and again, I can appreciate, I'm talking about Chandler, and I'll get to Gilbert in a minute, and I understand Gilbert's not Chandler, and Chandler's not Gilbert, and there is a distinction there. But I think it's important to note, and I only point this out because there are other communities within the valley on 10,000 square foot lots or larger, where the setbacks have been at 15 and 20. In those communities, there are a mix of ones and twos, and certainly those communities have been successful, and there is not a fear, or not a feeling of a row effect, or that you're kind of staring down a rifle barrel, you know, heading into a box canyon. Within the town of Gilbert, we know that there are at least two other communities, at least that we were able to find. One is within Freeman Farms Development, built by Fulton, located at Greenfield and Okeechobee. Within that development, there are R-110 or SF-10 lots, and the setbacks there have been reduced to 15 and 20. And I think we would all agree that Freeman Farms is a great community where there's not necessarily a concern about what's going on there.
Brendan, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you happen to have any pictures that you could throw up on the screen that show us what the street scene looks like there?
Unfortunately, through the Chairman, Commissioner Fuller, I don't have pictures of what those communities look like. And I'll tell you that the other community is Seville. There is a parcel within Seville that I believe the setback is actually less than 15 feet. I believe in Seville in parcel 21, if I'm not mistaken, the setbacks there were reduced to 10 feet for SF-10 lots, and I think it was 10 and 20 within Seville. I do believe, so bear with me one minute, I do have a picture of what the home in Seville And this is a home, clearly, it's not a home built by Lennar, but certainly you can see that there's, you know, and it's tough to tell on a two-dimensional picture, but you can tell there's considerable amount of separation, there's opportunity for landscaping in the front to occur within that home and still provide it. So when you, when you take a look, we don't believe, and we understand the concerns, we don't believe the reduction will interfere with Lennar's ability to provide a visually diverse and a very pleasing street scene. When you take a look at, at the street scene, and this is a representation of the product that Lennar is building, you'll see that there's lots of diversity, lots of horizontal movement going on, back and forth, and again, it's tough to tell from a two-dimensional picture, but you can see that there is the variation, and especially when we're talking about one-story homes, it's not going to have that row effect, or that role feeling. Here's that same perspective. That's about as far out as I can go, from a different look. But again, you see high-quality architecture, high-quality design, a mix of materials, changes in the planes, changes in the horizontal movement. And so when you look at it, and when you look and think, you know, this product in, in parcel 13, I think there is going to be a visually diverse product. And certainly, when we look, if you were to look down a rifle barrel, at what this, this would look like, we do have a representation of what that will, will look like, and if, if I can get it to fit on. This was something that we recently pulled together as we thought about things, and what you're looking at, and this is a cross-section, again, kind of looking down the rifle barrel. What you've got is 50 feet of right-of-way, which is, you know, roughly 33 feet of asphalt. You have a right-of-way landscaping tract, so all told, if we, if we had a situation where we had two side-entry garages at 15 feet setback, you're still looking at 80 feet of separation between the homes, which is a considerable amount of separation occurring. Additionally, when you look back and recognize only that the, that the side-entry portion of these garages, if you look at, only constitute a small portion of this actual home, that when you look to where the, the majority of the home is, you've got 100, 100 feet of separation between building to building. And so when you look at it, and when you look at this perspective, we believe that our request is certainly appropriate. Again, there's significant amounts of separation, the fact that we're stipulating to all single-story homes, we're not making any changes to the side-yard setbacks, so there will be 20 feet of separation between the homes. And again, when you go and you look at the layout of parcel 13, we think all of these things combine to still provide a very pleasing street scene, one that does not create a row or canyon-like effect because of all the things that are going on. We certainly believe that this request is appropriate. Just in summary, again, we don't think the changes to these two standards, the lot coverage or the front yard setbacks, are, are going to be detrimental to the high quality that has already been established by Lennar in Leighton Lakes. It's something that they will continue to build on. They have a vested interest to make sure their community looks great, that it continues to succeed and build out. And certainly, they wouldn't go forward with this request if it didn't make sense to them and to what, the quality that's already been established in Leighton Lakes. I'll be happy to answer any questions, going back to the lot coverage if we need to, but certainly can, can talk about the front yard setback and get into additional discussion. But we would request this body's approval to reduce the front yard setbacks, as we've outlined, to 15 feet for a side-entry, livable forward, diverse housing product, 20 feet for a forward-facing garage, as well as the lot coverage increase.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Powell?
So, if you park an SUV in a 15-foot setback, how deep is the right-of-way?
33 feet.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Powell, just so I understand your question you're asking, if we, if we park a vehicle within this 15-foot setback, how much additional space do we have?
The sidewalk is five foot. What is the distance of the right-of-way? The width of the right-of-way?
Well, the total right-of-way is 50 feet on both sides. Right-of-way to right-of-way is 50 feet, but the...
Talking about that little portion to the left of your sidewalk there, right there.
21, roughly a four-foot right-of-way landscape track is what we're looking at there.
Okay, so there's some potential, then, you can't put the bumper of the car right up against the garage, so you've got to have some distance between the garage and the SUV, so there's some potential that SUV extending out into the sidewalk, then, wouldn't you say?
Through the Chairman, Commissioner Powell, no, there is not. Because this is a side-entry garage, there is no vehicle that is going to be parked here that would be face into that garage and then extend out into the right-of-way. Looking at the other side of the lot, if you look at this particular diagram, I mean, you have plenty of space right here to park an SUV that would not take up all of the driveway, and certainly would not extend into the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bianchi, did you have anything? I thought I saw your hand up earlier. Okay.
Mr. Ray, we talked about Leighton Lakes going into Chandler as well, and have you guys, has Lennar had a similar plan that you've had to run through Chandler that you've done, that you're proposing here? Or, as you had mentioned before, the lot sizes are different? I'm just wondering, for consistency, if that's gone through in Chandler as well?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Bianchi, most recently, we processed a plan. Chandler's rezoning process is a little bit different than the town's, but we did process a plan that kind of made some changes to the subdivision layout, made some minor changes to the lots, not the overall lot size, but the lots down here. But in that case, as part of the zoning application within Chandler, which uses a substantive PAD, which allows you to write your own development standards, the development standards that we've writ, wrote in this particular parcel were for 15 and 20-foot front yard setbacks. I'll tell you that across the street, about right here, on behalf of Ashton Woods, similar-sized lots, similar-sized request in terms of a 15 and 20-foot front yard setback, those homes were a mix of ones and twos. I don't believe that the product has designed yet for parcel 22, so I can't, I don't know specifically the product that will go here, whether it's, whether it's going to be all ones or a mix of ones and twos. But I know that throughout what's been planned up here in the northern quadrant, as well as what they've planned over here, we recently took a zoning case through for them here, these are a mix of ones and twos, ones and twos up here, ones and twos, and, you know, these are a mix of twos and ones, and so that's, that's kind of what you got going on, going around the park.
Was that, in parcel 22, so you got a 15 and 20, were the side setbacks and the rear setbacks the same as what you, what is in effect for this parcel? Or did they have, did they, do you have a larger side setbacks in that parcel?
Through the Chairman, Commissioner Fuller, the setbacks are similar in that, if I remember right, I think the side yards might be 15 and 10, excuse me, not 15 and 10, 5 and 10, but they would, they're either 5 and 10, or they're 10 and 10s. And then as far as the rear yard setbacks, they are 30 feet for a single-story and 20 feet for a two-story.
Yeah. I thought, I could be wrong, that they let you bring it forward, but they made you separate them a little bit more.
In terms of the side yard setbacks?
Yeah.
Again, I...
I'm sorry, they let you bring it forward? Yeah, whatever. Okay.
Then one more question?
Commissioner Bianchi?
And then the follow-up question I had was, just if you can clarify for me, on the setback that you're requesting on the SF-10, could you develop with what the proposal that town staff would be recommending, or is that just, is that just removing excess lot area from the back to the front?
Yeah.
You could still fit your plan on those lots, it would just result in less backyard space, is that correct?
Through the, through the Chair, Commissioner Bianchi, the answer is no. If we went with what staff's recommending for a side-entry garage being at 20 feet, we would encroach into the rear yard setback. And if you had the time and we could look at the details of this, I could show you exactly how that works out, but on, let me, let me find one here, and I can, we can zoom in. If we, if we look at this particular example, you'll see that the building setback is, is 15 feet. When I look in the rear, I have my 30-foot building setback line, and on this particular lot, I have a difference of 36 feet. So in theory, yes, I could move this to 20 feet, but what ends up happening is, if I have two of these plans side by side, I have to meet the mandatory three-foot staggering requirement, and so these plans, this plan would not work side by side with each other. If we were to look on another lot, for example, this lot 10, if we, if, if we look at lot 208, again, with a, on this particular plan, with a 15-foot building setback, I have two feet of clear in the back before I'm encroaching into the rear yard setback. So, again, as I indicated, if we went with staff recommendations, staff, staff's recommendation to go to 20... to go to 20 and 25, that would not work. Now, one of the things that we have discussed, and I don't know if this is an appropriate time, certainly willing to do that, because we understand there's concerns about what it's going to look like, and to provide some additional diversity, we would be willing to stipulate or change the request that forward-facing garages be set back at 25 feet. So what the request would then be, would be to have side-entry, livable forward diverse housing product at 15 feet, and forward-facing garages set back at 25 feet. That will, again, provide additional horizontal movement within the subdivision, again, but I think when we look at it from a whole, it's still going to be good, still going to be high-quality, and still going to do what Lennar wants it to do.
So 25 feet for front garages and 15 feet for living area?
Yeah, and side-entry.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner...
But a caveat on that is that you could not and would not stipulate to how many of those you would allow. You want complete flexibility on perhaps having all side-facing garages, if that's what the buyers want, right?
Through the Chairman, Commissioner Caveney, yes, that is correct. We think there's a variety of challenges associated with pulling a percentage. I think staff indicated you've got enforcement issues, certainly from a planning perspective. It's one of those things that's tough to dictate. Lennar is not the type of builder that pre-plots what home can go on what lot, rather they let the market dictate that. And so we would certainly have concerns about a percentage being at 15 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ailer?
On, I can appreciate the 25 for the forward-facing, so thanks for bringing that part up. But on the forward-facing that you're looking at on the 25, what, if you were looking at side to side, say, the front of the building is like 80 feet or 65 feet, what's the, is that like, is it a 20-foot garage? How deep is the other way? Is that a standard one-car, 20, 22 feet in depth? What's the front-facing dimension of that?
We can certainly run through each plan, but I would say that the typical distance between...
General.
The face of the one-car garage or livable forward and the face of this would be approximately 10 feet in distance.
No, no, the, what's street-facing, what's your front facade facing of the street? Is it 20?
What's the width of the first car?
Like a standard garage?
The one-car garage?
Yeah.
What's the width?
Like, that's forward for, yes, length.
20 feet.
Okay. So you're looking at a little less than a third of the actual house being into that setback?
Projecting into the setback area.
Projecting into the setback.
So for the one-car garage, she wants to know the area compared to the ratio of the front of the house?
We'd have to look at that. I don't know if...
In general.
I mean, I don't know if one-third is an adequate number.
Well, just ballparking it, it looks about right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not half, and it's, you know, not a tenth, so...
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just looking, I'm just trying to understand that, back to the canyon effect, which is what I think we're trying to stay away from, in looking at it, that we're not talking about the whole mass of the house in that 15-foot. And we're, and I guess how we look at that as in a third of the house or in ballpark that we're looking at that.
I see what you're getting at, is trying to rationalize the realism of what actually will be projecting or the reason for the reduction.
Right.
Not for the whole facade of the home, but just for a portion, a segmented portion of the home to project into that area.
Right.
Okay, got it. I know that, for me, I know that we had a conversation previously, I think a couple of conversations about the project, I think, and my question, I think, which I think you brought up a little bit ago, was, is the reduction needed for every plan? I'm not a fan of necessarily approving reductions for all plans. I mean, I think in general, the town has gotten a lot of requests for reductions in front yard setbacks, and we're kind of seeing a trend here. And so I think it's maybe warranted in certain locations and not necessarily in others, but I think my concern, as I expressed to you, was making sure that we didn't have this canyon effect. These are larger lots, which is great, but making sure that we weren't creating row housing in SF-10, essentially. And I appreciate what Commissioner Ailer brought up about only a portion of the house would essentially be pushed into that reduced setback, proposed setback area. But can you tell me, out of all the home plans that you have thus far, the single-home plans for this SF, or for this parcel 13, how many of those homes actually need that reduction?
Lennar is currently proposing six-floor plans, six single-story floor plans for these 69 lots. And I hate to bring up the 69 lots, but I think it's important, because I can certainly understand your concern if we're talking, you know, 200 lots, kind of gridlock pattern and stuff like that. But in here, 69 lots, and of those six-floor plans, four are side-entry or livable forward, and two are forward-facing garages.
Okay, so for the two that are forward-facing, those are the ones that you would propose to keep the 25-foot front yard setback? Is that what, did I understand you correctly?
Correct, yes. We would stipulate that forward-facing garages, front yard setback be 25 feet.
To help maintain some sort of depth along the street front?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's in addition, I mean, the other thing that we talked about is this three-foot staggering requirement, but that's going to come into play. So, you know, regardless of if we're at 15 or 25, on those plans that, I showed you the one plan that wouldn't necessarily fit with a three-foot stagger in it, it's going to be incumbent upon Lennar to make sure that they, you know, that they at least do that, so they're not running into a three-foot stagger problem.
Now, for the four plans that have the livable forward, do all of the, do each of the four plans require the way that they're designed to be pushed to the 15-foot? It looks like some of the plans may be a little bit smaller, and so you have a little more flexibility to, and that you might not necessarily need to reduce or ask for the reduction in setback for those. I think, mentally, I'm just trying to get a visual. I think, I think I have an idea in my mind of that, but I wanted to get your input, since you know the plans obviously better than I.
Chairman Whitman, if I'm looking closely, I believe that all of the plans will need the 15-foot building setback of the four that are forward-facing.
Because otherwise, they would have crouched it to the rear yard setback?
That is correct. I know, if you'll bear with me one minute.
Does anybody have a magnifying glass?
I believe there may be one of the forward-facing plans, and I'd want to confirm this with Representative from Lennar, that one of the, one of the plans might not need the 15 feet. But I would add, I think when we're looking at it from an enforcement and as we're going through things and the staff's planning things and checking things, I think it's a little bit cleaner to say that, you know, all forward-facing is 25 feet, and the side entries, livable forwards can be at 15 feet.
Right. And of course, I was just trying to get a mental picture in my mind, because I know that some, if the plan doesn't necessarily need it and the homeowner doesn't care, I mean, there may be positioning allowed on that particular lot. And so when I'm thinking of the subdivision and trying to visualize how it may look, the street front may look, since we don't have any specific exhibits, it seems like there's a lot of flexibility built in, maybe some, the forward-facing garage setback that'll be provided in addition to maybe some of the single-story plans with the forward living that may also, might also not be pushed all the way to the 15-foot line if it were to be approved. And so visually, I'm thinking that there might be a lot more variation in that street front than I was originally thinking.
Chairman, were you, were you thinking that maybe crafting some sort of percentage that the setback could be 15 percent, or 15 feet on X percent of the lots?
You know, I don't, I don't know specifically. I was just trying to, I guess, visualize and understand the product a little bit better, and I know that we've spoken a couple of times. And I know that staff doesn't necessarily like those types of stipulations, because it becomes, becomes more difficult to enforce and for permitting and, and, you know, plating and, you know, getting particular plans approved. I know it's doable. I'm just, I mean, we can save the discussion for later, but...
I mean, is there concern that it's massively over-inclusive, not ma, it's over-inclusive going to 15?
I think so.
Because there's plans that just don't need it.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Chairman Whitman, and members of the commission, if I may, I'd like to kind of go back where I started. And if you look at parcel 13, again, we're talking about 69 lots. And the concern about the row or canyon effect, from my perspective, if it ever were to come up, would come up only along this street. And I only point that out to say that, you know, I have short street lengths, I have curvilinear streaks, I have cul-de-sacs, you know, there's curves here. It's not a subdivision, you know, of the size and magnitude of 300 lots. We're talking about 69 lots that we're requesting that reduction in. And because they're all single-story, and because there is enough horizontal diversity in the homes to begin with, and horizontal movement, and certainly the quality from our perspective, we don't feel that that concern of a canyon effect or a row effect is going to materialize, again, when we're talking about this particular parcel. And that's why we tailored our request such that it's, it is specific only to parcel 13.
And I get that. I think, I think when you drive into a subdivision, whether it's on a straight street, on a curvilinear street, on short block lengths, you kind of get the feel of the subdivision, no matter if it's a long street or not. And that is more of a concern to me, rather than just, you know, a long row of homes. I think it's the overall feel of the monotony that I think is a concern when you start pushing things, pushing the envelope especially with setbacks. Any further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, are there any members of the public here that would like to discuss this item? I don't have any cards specifically regarding this item. Nobody wants to discuss this? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Oh, actually, well, I guess the applicant doesn't, do you have anything further to add, since we basically discussed everything with you momentarily?
If there are additional questions, I'm happy to answer them if they're necessary.
Great, thanks. Staff, does staff have anything further to add?
I've got a question for staff.
Okay, perfect. I don't know where staff is.
Who, was it?
Mr. Williams.
Nathan started this out an hour and a half ago.
I know. Restroom break?
Mike?
It appears Nathan stepped out for a moment, but I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
So Mike, how, this thought of, and I understand it's kind of a mess, not a mess might be a little strong. It presents certain challenges, the enforcing percentages. How is that? Is that, if the commission were to consider some sort of percentage basis as far as the 15-foot setback, is that something that staff would be, what's staff's position on that? What's your position on that, Mike?
Chair, Commissioner Fuller, there are a number of people at the town and the Development Services Department that touch these projects as they go through the permitting process, as you know. And what we would encourage is to either say yes to the applicant's request or say no to the applicant's request, because trying to craft something that attaches a percentage to the number of lots in this subdivision can only take advantage of this, I think, makes it very difficult administratively to enforce, because we have so many plans that go through for permitting, and this would make it very outside of the ordinary to have to calculate percentages. And I fear also that as homes are sold, that they'll be, the developer would actually be bumping up to the percentages and then possibly could be coming back here at some point in the future to say, we need a few more lots to be able to take advantage of that.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it was, we were thinking about it, the applicant didn't seem like he was in favor of it, staff isn't, and, okay, it was just something that, sometimes we craft these little nice little ideas up here where everybody, we seem like it works for everybody, but in reality, it doesn't work at all, so, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Any further questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Caveney, did you have anything? No? Commissioner Ailer?
It gets back to that percentage and that open and closed percentage of front. I mean, would it also be hard to, to, I mean, it's pretty simple, if you have a 65-foot front-facing facade, and then you took said, one-third could be five feet in that front setback, then you're at 30 or...
20 lots.
22 feet, which would be a garage or a nice living space. Would it still be hard on going that route?
Commissioner Ailer, I, you know, I think that might be a little bit easier, but again, I think in general, you know, when you have to start calculating percentages of frontage of houses, and you've got lots and lots of homes coming through the permitting process, it just does add to the difficulty of administratively enforcing these.
You know, and another thing now that I think about it, let's say somebody's house was destroyed, and they wanted to rebuild, and they went down to the town and said, what's my front setback? It's like, I don't know, let's go figure out what everybody else built in your community and see if you're over or under. You know, I mean, when it doesn't tie to a specific lot, it's, I think that would be, if there were a casualty on a property, that would be very difficult to...
Well, that would be on the percentage, but not the front, every lot of the 69 lots would have a percentage in the closed projection going forward, so...
Oh, right, right.
If you, every lot would have half or a third of the closed projection in that front setback, so it would be, I think it would be easier to craft that way than it would be, right, like you said, if there's a fire, then, then how do you know? I mean, it'd be very hard to go out that route, but I'm just trying to give another option.
Any further questions or comments for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion. Commissioner Bianchi?
I guess I...
I saw you push the button, so...
To lead off. I think when we look at, I think Mr. Ray did a very good job trying to keep up with the various ways we were trying to go. I think when we talk about the SF-10 plan, you know, it sounds like they can build the plans they want to, just in a lot of cases, they can't build a similar model side to side. And then we had a lot of discussion on, you know, front yard setback, I don't know what the discussion would have been if we would have talked about a reduced rear yard setback, and if that's, would have been a bigger issue. I agree with staff to the 45% of the one-story, because it meets the LDC. I'm not real comfortable with the same setbacks that are consistent for SF-7, SF-8, and SF-10. And the other thing for me is, I'd really like to be able to hold up the interpretation for the open air, I should say, or hold up the open-air interpretation, because we've got to be careful of the precedent we're going to be setting here as well. And also, I'd want to be consistent with the standards of the original PAD in regards to the rest of the development as well. So with that being said, I'm most likely to hold up with staff recommendation as they presented in the staff report. That's where I'm coming out on it.
Okay, thank you.
May I, may I...
Commissioner Caveney?
And I don't know how this exactly can happen. Can we vote on these two different issues, as I see it, which would be the setbacks versus the lot size as two different pieces?
I think because it's advertised as one case, we need to take one motion for the entire case. I mean, we can, I think, generally discuss what our ideas are and thoughts are, and then somebody can propose a motion based on that, and if it passes...
Yeah, it'd be two separate motions, yeah, it'd be separate motions. You can't, yeah, since it's one case, you do.
Right. So it has to be all encompassed.
I don't understand that, then, two separate motions on the same case.
No, you cannot, you cannot do two separate.
You cannot do two separate.
No, no, you would do a motion, you would have motions in the alternative is what, so you'd have a motion with the setbacks one way, and then you'd have a motion with the setbacks a different way. But they would have to be a complete motion on the advertised.
I see, got it, okay.
I guess I can give you my two cents. I'm not... Anybody? I guess I can give you my two cents. I'm not entirely sure how I feel, and I'm anxious to hear the thoughts of some of the other commissioners as well. But with respect to the lot coverages, I, especially with respect to lots or parcels 11 and 15, I'm fine with the increase of 1%. So, to increase the lot coverage to 46% versus the 45. With respect to the parcel 13, I feel comfortable enough with the lot coverage to 41%. I don't think that I'm, I feel necessarily comfortable to increasing it to 45% when we know it's not necessary or needed, and that they still have the 5% open air that they can utilize. This is just for the base lot coverage. So, if they, if they need to expand that, they have options to do that and the right to do so. I think initially, these, the setbacks for the SF-10 or parcel 13, I, again, I'm not entirely sure how I feel about it, but my initial thoughts are that I, I like the additional stipulation proposed by the applicant, which requires a front yard setback of 25 feet for the garage forward plans, the two plans. So, I do like that, because I think that will help provide a little variation to the street scheme and to the community itself. Thinking about the reduction to 15 feet, generally, I'm not in favor of reducing front yard setbacks arbitrarily, but I think that there may be, like Commissioner Ayler had pointed out earlier, that only a certain percentage of the home will actually project in, or be projecting into that 15-foot area, and the rest of the home is obviously behind that point. So, I think that helps to give it, give the street a better feel, because there is more variation, and it's not an entire facade of a house at the 15-foot line. So, I think, at this point, I'm leaning to, in support of that with the stipulation of the 25-foot forward-facing. Contingent upon what I hear from others?
I'll share my thoughts if it's...
Commissioner Cabbney?
Thank you. My inclinations are this, that I am not as concerned about the lot coverage. I think the 1% request for all three parcels is okay with me. I see the product that's being delivered is a, is a good product, and it's a needed product and well-received. And I think it is enough of a distinction that we can justify that. I do not support the applicant's request for the setback, front setbacks. I do support staff's, because keeping in mind that the PAD is more stringent than what staff is requesting, I'm in support of what staff is requesting, and that is to bring it back to the 20 and 25. I don't like the stipulation for the two plans to go to 25, because we don't know how many there will be. We know that only a third of the models are in a condition that will be 25 feet back, and we don't know how many the buyers are going to be ordering. So, I don't think we want to drive it that way, or we could end up with something we don't, we don't like. So, I think my inclination is to support staff's recommendation on the setbacks, and then back to allow the 1% as requested.
Thank you. Commissioner Ayler?
I'd like to follow up on the 1% increase on all three. I don't have an issue with either. Getting to the setbacks that we're more discussing. On a design side, I look at the reduction to 15 feet for the, for the 30, 33 ballpark percentage that we're looking at on these livable spaces and, and garages that are side-facing, which I think is a very needed product in a, in a community like this. If you have all forward-facing, or you're pushing them into a forward-facing garage because it works more, you get a sea of garages. You still have some garages here, but they're limited, because you've taken one to the side. So, in adding that product line, I think, helps the community even more. And the diversity from 15-foot, which is only 20, 30 feet, and then you have 20, and then you have 25-foot, you'll get a nice movement in, in the community as a neighborhood, because you'll have a lot of movement in that front facade. It's really tough when you go to older communities, and it's, even though we have one-story buildings, you get that canyon effect. You get the old ranch style, everyone's on the same line, and being able to have that movement makes a lot of streetscape that we're not quite seeing through a few little pictures. But I think that it's important to have that change in elevation. So, with those two, I find it that when the next-gen product, you know, it's nice, I know we can't really stipulate to it, but I think it's something that's nice, that they have a quality product. But the main things for me is the movement in the street facade, and, and that's why I'd be more in favor for both the applicant's request.
Vice Chairman Peterson?
Go that way.
Okay. Commissioner Fuller?
Did you punt down here? Was that what that was? Okay.
She lobbed the ball.
All right. Defer, maybe, okay. You know, I could, I don't have a problem with the 1%. I think that's fine. I think that was well justified. I think the, I think the deviation from the front setback from 25 and 30 to 15, 20 was a really big step. And what I typically ask myself in this is, what is the justification for that, or how are they going to mitigate it? The justification is, we have certain plans, and they won't fit, and they let that out. And I think they did a pretty good job of that. That's the justification for it. How are they going to mitigate it? You know, this is a different scenario, because I'm not sure we've had somebody come in before and say, I understand that your, your concern is the row housing. And I know the applicant hit numerous times that this was a 69-foot, a 69-lot subdivision. I understand that argument. I'm not sure it's super persuasive to me, whether it's 69 or 150, I think, you know, a community is a community in Gilbert, and, and so I look at it as such. And my thought is, that the way they're going to mitigate that issue is step into single-story. And, you know, we've had communities before that have stepped to single-story as a buffering requirement along certain lots, but this was an entire community step. And I think that really, for me, it drives down that canyon feel as you're going down, and you don't have the two-story houses. Something that's also helpful for me was Josh's, Commissioner Ayler's point, which was, it's not like, the lot, one, they're already, they're going to have the 3% staggering requirement anyway. And then you have the, it's going to be staggered just on the, the side-turn garages are set back from the rest of the house. So, you're not going to get, I don't think, it would have been nice to see some pictures tonight of what this looked like in other communities, just the row feel, to kind of get a better sense for that. But having driven many subdivisions in my life, I think I got a pretty good idea. And I think it's, I found that to be very persuasive, probably the most persuasive thing, was what Commissioner Ayler said, was, you know, look, we're not talking about 100% of the house is encroaching into the 15-foot setback. It is somewhere between 25 and 35% probably that will encroach. So, again, I think you're going to, you're going, you're going to drop off that canyon feel to a certain extent. And then finally, the 25-foot setback for the two-story, I thought was a nice admission.
Two-story?
For the...
No, it's...
I'm sorry. Yeah, 20, sorry, 25-foot setback for, for the front-facing garage, I thought was a, was very helpful, to again mitigate the concern that I think we all have. I appreciate staff's position in this, and I don't think any of us thought this, this would be an hour and 45-minute case, as we started out. But I, I think it, I think it's a difficult case. I understand the request. It wasn't a slam dunk. I think, at the beginning, I was in favor of the, the 1%, and not in favor of the front yard setback deviation. But after listening to Commissioner Ayler and Mr. Ray's presentation in the concession on the 25 feet, and the single-story step, my concerns of the community feel and how it's going to look driving down the street, especially on these larger lots, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Peterson?
Chairman, I'm glad that I deferred to Commissioner Fuller, because I think he answered any questions that I had in my head. I completely agree with everything that he said. I don't need to rehash it. I agree with everything that he said, and thank him for clarifying it all for me.
Wow.
Commissioner Powell?
In a minute, please.
Yeah. That's on record, right?
Yep, it's on record.
We have to frame that one. Commissioner Powell?
You know, I, I would, I'm disappointed that we actually have to make a consideration for 1% increase in lot coverage. I'd like to see builders actually come in and conform to the regulations.
I think a lot of them do, we just don't see them.
Okay. So, my instinct is to support the staff on everything that the staff has recommended.
Okay. All right, with that, is there any further comment, or are we ready for a motion?
Have you been writing it all down?
Well, I kind of have it in my brain. I didn't necessarily write it down, but if you want me to try and craft the proposed recommendation. For the following reasons, the development proposal conforms to the intent of the general plan and can be coordinated with existing and planned development of the surrounding area. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend, oh, actually, that's probably not the right motion to go going off of this. Let me start.
There's not much there.
Yeah, I guess...
There's not much there, you're going to have to go back.
All right. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend to council that it approves Z-1317, subject to the following conditions. And let's start with that, because I think we need to craft a couple of them. Stipulation number one is proposed by staff would remain intact. Stipulation number two would be modified to say, the maximum lot coverage for one-story homes shall be 41% in the Leighton Lakes Phase 2, parcel 13, only for the SF-10 zoning district. The minimum front setbacks shall be 15 feet and 25 feet in the Leighton Lakes Phase 2, parcel 13, only for the SF-10 zoning district as currently permitted under the LDC.
Uh-oh. The 15 feet is not as currently permitted, so you would just...
Oh, sorry.
...drop that portion of it?
You're right, you're right, absolutely. Only for the SF-10, period. Stipulation number four, the maximum lot coverage shall remain unchanged for one-story homes, and shall be at 46%? Okay, and for two-story homes shall be 41 or 40%?
41.
I thought it was just the two-story homes, or the one-story homes that needed the increase, not the two, not the single story?
I think it's 41, isn't it? I'm not sure. 40?
40, okay. In the Leighton Lakes. And then, I think there needs to be an additional stipulation that states that the, the parcel 13...
Chairman Whitman?
Yes.
Two things. I don't mean to interrupt your motion, but I do want to interrupt your motion. On the last one, on four, maximum lot coverage shall remain unchanged?
Okay, so take out the unchanged of the...
Yeah, shall, shall be...
46%?
Oh, yeah.
For the single-story home?
46% for one-story homes, and 40% for two-story homes? Is that what it was?
Correct.
Okay, in the Leighton Lakes Phase 2, parcel 11. And I think that for the last stipulation, I think what you want to say is, all homes within parcel 13 shall be one-story.
Correct. But then I also want to add an additional stipulation, that all forward-facing garages in parcel 13 shall have a minimum front yard setback of 25 feet, as proposed by the applicant. I think, I think that concludes my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by myself, second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Okay, so Powell, Bianchi, and Cabbney, opposed. So, the motion passes four to three? Great, thank you.
Molly.
That was a tough one.
Forward-facing garages within parcel 15.
Thanks to all of you in the audience for staying with us. Moving on to agenda item number 18, which is Z-13-13, men ordinance number 667, 746, and 1236 to remove approximately 6.5 acres of real property located at the south of the southwest corner of Warner and 130th Street, PAD, and to rezone said property from 3.5 acres of single-family SF-7 and three acres of Town of Gilbert single-family SF-15 with a planned area development overlay. With that, we'll invite Ms. Maria Caravida.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The next case is the White Fence Estates proposal, and as soon as I get this on the screen, I...
Let it?
Okay. The commission showed, or was presented at the study session last month, and the comments, the applicant has not changed anything, because the issues were more like a discussion, clarifications and questions. The subdivision remains as a gated community. That's the location of the site, which is south of the southwest corner of Warner and 130th Street, is an infill parcel of 6.5 acres, because the two acres on the north of the SF-15 designation are being used by the town to build the next fire station. The, this map that we have on the, on the, on the screen shows what staff calls the zoning districts transition map. So, we go beyond what is happening on the subject site, what is happening to the south, and beyond of the entire intersection with the different zoning designations. It is a fact that we have a large enclave of SF-43 to the east by the name of White Fence Farms subdivision, recently annexed into the town, maybe two, three years ago, or maybe more, time flies. And that, and the subdivisions that took place surrounding this enclave had a lot more acreage that allowed them to present or propose and develop a zoning district buffer. These exhibit shows the existing and the proposed zoning. This acreage is part of a PAD known by Warner and Cooper PAD that had different zoning districts, residential and commercial designations along the Warner and frontage, leaving just these six and a half acres for any type of residential development. Staff met several times with the applicant even prior for them to submitting this proposal, and staff indicated the support of the rezoning request. The applicant did all the notification and held a neighborhood meeting early and prior to even coming for pre-app, and they had a good attendance. And the public participation is important, because the, the property owners indicated that they wanted to be part of the approval process and expressed their concerns about. And those are listed on the page number, I think, number two of your staff report, three, actually. And they had to, at that time, and those were taken from the minutes, the attendance residents from the White Fence Farms across the street to the east, and the couple of stone to the south, they were a couple of representatives. They were interested in knowing the number, size, and prices of the houses, the zoning designation that was indicated to... indicated to them, opportunity for participating, questions about the street alignment falling directly onto one of the attendance homes, the need for the points of access, the traffic that this new subdivision will create along 130th Street, improvements, an installation of a speed limit signs, and will be this gated community, which is certainly it will be, and if the homes will front onto 130th Street, and if they were sure, that was for sure, that the town was going to build a fire station, the two acres on the corner. So those questions were answered to the best of the ability. Staff was there, I was there, and, and at that time, the product was not finalized. So the applicant has met all the notification requirements. They are not asking for any deviation in the general plan density because they are at 4.2 with the 27 lots, single-family six proposed. And so the existing zoning designation, you have it on the screen, and the, and the proposed is single-family six with no deviations from sizes or setbacks from what the code calls for. We also have to bring up the fact that houses that will be built along on the back of the commercial will have to be single-story by code. So that's of knowledge of the applicant. And these other exhibits have to do with what we have received as the layout of the subdivision proposed, which we'll bring back to you on a future agenda, and showing schematically the location of the open space utilized as a buffer, a buffer that goes from 31 feet linear to 77 along 130th Street, which is certainly in compliance with what the subdivision to the south did and exceeds that at some locations, the active open space area within the gated subdivision that buffers lots from the existing shopping center to the center, to the north and to the west. And then this other exhibit gives the details about how the main entrance will be treated, it's a gated community, and how the open space and the type of amenities that the applicant will be offering when they move to the next step, stage of the process, which is the preliminary plot review, and also the houses will have to go to the design review board. And we haven't heard what type. I, I understand it will be two stories with single stories that are required along the commercial boundary. So with that said, these are details that the applicant has submitted for the quality of the materials that will be used in the monuments, entry gates, and design in general for all those amenities that create the identity of a subdivision. With that said, I don't have any more to add, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here to respond to any concerns the, the commission may have. I understand we have some residents in the nearby areas who would like to also speak and, and be heard about their concerns or issues.
Great. Thank you, Maria. Does, do we have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Fuller?
Maria, what, a couple of things. So it's code, then, that requires that the, the lots that back up to the commercial are single-story?
Correct.
Oh, I did not know that. Okay.
Yes. It is in the site standards for residential. I think it's Article Four, and says that any residential development that is abiding 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre, which normally are apartments, or any non-residential district excepting neighborhood commercial, shall be limited to single-story.
Okay. And my second thought, question is, what is staff's position on the gates specifically? Is that, I know that's probably something you've fretted over a little bit.
And we expressed it in the report that we usually do not support gating because we feel that that goes against the connectivity, access by first aid, and the police. In this particular case, the infill piece that is left has no connection to the south and just the street. It will not be connected to the north because it's a commercial already developed with a vacancy of those two acres that will be used for the fire station. The fire station will have their own enclosure. So we feel that this is one of those cases that we do not oppose. We're not excited about it, but really, we don't feel this damaging anything at that particular location.
Okay. And would both, would the gates, assuming that were approved, would the gate, would the gate, would both gates be operable, or would one of them be like a crash gate?
One to the north is a crash gate. It's an emergency exit only. The main entrance will be where you see that bulge, the design of the entrance, two-way entrance to the south.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
Maria, when you reviewed this, was there any, was there any concern by staff of potentially putting two-story homes that border the SF-7 just to the south there? Because when you look down that straight and narrow, you've, you've got those homes fronting it. I'm wondering if you put two stories facing the back of them, what that's gonna look like?
The houses to the south, this exhibit is not too clear, but there is a road that has no houses, but just a sidewalk abiding, so it's just a wall with a strip of landscape or something against the wall, but there's no houses immediately to most of the, the south boundary. There will be two stories, and the, and the applicant can clarify that. Our concern was mostly to prevent nuisance to new created lots next to the commercial. We felt that it was a comparable development to what's happening on the south, maybe not exactly the same, but a good transition going to the intersection. But our, mostly our concern and the layout of the proposed subdivision respond to our concerns about creating the buffer next to the shopping center and along 130th for also transition to the acre lots. And north-south lots which will not face onto the acre lots property.
So, yes, so, so no concern with the two, two stories behind it opposite?
No, because we have also two stories on the south.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Maria. Ms. Maria, Ms. Caravida. All right, is the applicant here? If you could provide your name and city of residence? Which I believe is Gilbert now.
Good evening, Chairman Whitman and members of the commission. For your record, my name is Stephen Earl. My city of residence is the town of Gilbert. I am pleased to be here tonight on behalf of Ryland Homes. The president of Ryland Homes, Reed Porter, is here in the audience. Should you have questions of him. We also appreciate the recommendation of support from staff, and we are in agreement with their conditions. We also think it's important to mention that this request is in compliance with the general plan, which calls for this site to be developed at 3.5 to 5.5 dwelling units per acre, and we're at 4.2. In terms of the justification for this request for R-16, draw your attention to an exhibit which the staff also used, which demonstrates, we believe, just how significant this infill site is. All, whenever there is a development that occurs over a period of time and leaves some parcels as orphaned, you have potential for higher density being proposed. And sometimes you have an outlet. This particular piece of property actually did have an outlet onto Warner Road until the city decided to build a fire station on that outlet. And so now it has no outlet onto Warner Road, and really it has its only access to 130th. So it is completely surrounded by development. That makes it very difficult and very challenging to propose anything. When we initially came in and we asked staff about the correct zoning category, and they indicated to us that they could support R-16. To the south of us is R-17. You see the shopping centers at the four corners, and R-16 is the, excuse me, SF-6 is the predominant zoning category buffering all those commercial elements. And of course, the entire, almost the entire west boundary of this site is adjacent to the existing shopping center, as well as most of the north side, which is the Sonic Drive-Thru and the Urgent Care Facility, and then the blue is the future fire station. Now, this exhibit is designed to show the property in context because it, it kind of illustrates just how significantly difficult it is to develop anything on a 6.5-acre parcel that has no marketing window to any major street. In this setting, you have to wonder why it is that this particular piece of property has not developed in the last 12 years, because the surrounding development was in and done in 1999 to year 2000. So for the last 12 to 13 years, this parcel has sat vacant. And it's largely because you either extend the commercial zoning onto the six and a half acre parcel, very small parcel, or you consider other alternatives, townhouses or something. But Trend Homes, to his credit, said, "We want to build single-family homes. We want to make sure we can create value here." And that's the reason for the gates, which I'll show in a moment. In working with staff, they were pretty firm in their suggestion that we not build homes backing onto the commercial, and to create this street, and then put the open space adjacent to the Sonic Drive-Thru so that you didn't have a home facing the noise associated with a drive-through facility. And then, of course, the ordinance requires these lots to be one-story. We actually didn't know that until Maria reminded us, but that's a good, that's a good policy. I remember zoning the Safeway Center on Elliott and, and Valvista some years ago, and there's two-story homes that overlooked the loading dock there, and I got a number of very difficult phone calls as soon as Safeway began its operations. So it's obviously, and this policy may have been born out of that case, but we agree with having one-story all the way along the northern perimeter. One of the major concerns of the neighborhood of the south, because they have a street that borders the south end of this project, was is an earlier version of this plan showed a connecting street to this street that's a part of their neighborhood. And we removed that connecting street. So their homes in this development are one and two-story. The homes in this development will be one and two stories. The other significant element was to move the open space again here. We had it up toward the front at first and moved it here in order to again buffer the commercial, because this project has, you know, neighbors all the way around it. So now let me deal with the folks that are likely here tonight, which are from the R-143 acre lot development. I looked at some old aerials and noticed that this development began back in the 70s. And that aerial, which I have with me tonight, shows that when they started building their homes, it was farmland all the way around them. So I'm sure that they've watched a lot of development occur that was probably inconsistent with the lifestyle they hoped they would have. And certainly Warner Road is now a six-lane facility. I would guess back then it may have been a two-lane county road. And 130th runs along the front of all their properties. They do front onto 130th. So for our part, knowing that we really had the only way to access the property was on 130th, we created these two access points. This is the major access point. The northern one we view as a exit-only, not necessarily just emergency-only, but exit-only for sure, and not an entrance. But we tried to create some significant setbacks here because these folks who are here tonight live right across the street. This exhibit illustrates what we've been trying to do in terms of the setbacks adjacent to these folks who live in the neighborhood to the east. The smaller numbers indicate the amount of open space. 104 feet is the largest amount of open space inside our project. The smallest is 40 feet at the top end, 65 at the bottom. And then the larger numbers are the distance away from the property line on the east side of the street. So if you combine the street with the open space elements within the project, there are significant setbacks to the front yards of these homes. This exhibit is intended to show exactly how elaborate we wish to landscape the front of our project, both because it creates value for our subdivision and because it buffers their homes. So that what they see across from them are beautiful homes that are going to be sold in the range of $350,000 up to $600,000 for the homes in this neighborhood. So to create that value, we felt it was important, both because we felt it slowed traffic down generally as people entered the project and exited, but also to create that additional value that we're seeking to get is to have a gated community, which means we have an eight-foot wall outside the development and then, and then the gated entryway. The last exhibit I would like to show deals with the issue of traffic, because we know that's a deep concern of the neighbors who are here. Again, the site in question is in yellow, and it shows 130th that comes down to essentially Knox Road, and then you have to turn to the east. The development that's directly south of this property accesses primarily to Cooper Road. It does have one point of access coming down onto the side street, which then can come back to 130th, but it has a significant and pointed access out to Cooper Road. It doesn't mean that all people will go to Cooper. You can make that turn, especially if you're coming over to the town center. You could either come up 130th or one of the other two roads to get to Warner Road. The development south of that, likewise, I've just colored in blue, the, the people who live very close to this connecting road, which may use 130th for their access. But again, this neighborhood to the south has a significant point of access here onto Cooper as well as here. So these developments were designed to carry the load of their traffic over to 100 and, over to Cooper Road, so that the lifestyle of the folks who live in, in this White Fence Farms would not be inundated by suburban traffic. We know that doesn't answer all their questions because we know that they desire speed humps on 130th. They want to know about a signal basically coming in at 130th and Warner. But we believe that the 27 homes that we would add into this will not significantly increase the amount of traffic on 130th, excuse me. And we believe that the gated entrance, both entry and exit, will have the sense of having people not speeding, especially when they're only trying to get a very short distance up to Warner Road. For all these reasons, we believe that this is an appropriate transition for R-16. It's been well-designed to buffer the neighbors to the east. It buffers the neighbors to the south and does not introduce traffic there. There's a street running along the southern boundary, and then there's one and two-story homes in their neighborhood. And again, we've buffered the commercial for our own interests, for the, so that our home buyers will not have to face any challenges associated with that. But it does create a great constraint, and as well as on the north with the future fire station and the Sonic Drive-Thru. For all these reasons, we believe that this is an excellent infill project and deserves support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
You.
With that, we'll open it up to the public. We do have a couple of comment cards that we've received. If there's anybody in addition to these two folks who wish to speak, please go ahead and fill out a card in the back of the room and bring it up to the roundtable up here, and we can, we'll invite you up. The first card I have is from Joe Thorne, and it says he wishes to speak. If you could come up to the dais and give your name and city of residence for the record, that would be great. Following him will be Richard Garcia. Feel free to come up to the front of the room if you'd like.
Good evening, commission. My name is Joe Thorne, and I live in Gilbert. And actually, my house is the one that the main entrance goes into my living room. And actually, my house is the one that the main entrance goes into my living room. Yeah, this goes right into my living room. The concerns I have is, you notice how it veers to the right? If they veered it to the left a little bit, they could put it between the two houses and not ruin my house. I mean, who's going to buy my house with an entrance going right into the living room? And it wouldn't take much because you're veering to the right, veer to the left. I mean, you've got grounds on both sides, so you're not deteriorating from any of the buffer zone. And all it does is it moves it to where it's not, the headlights don't go into my living room all the time. As far as traffic, I think his circles were very small. When you go down into here, I live on this street, it is a busy street. Anybody who's going to go east on Warner comes out this way up and takes a right to avoid the intersection. You're going to be adding, if each house has three cars, you're adding 81 more cars to that true stop. That is a lot of cars. Also, you showed the R-6s up above, which was totally surrounded by, or SF-6s, which were solely surrounded by SF-7s. Well, now, here you are surrounded by SF-7s, but the 43s here. I think it would be just fair to the community if this was SF-7. I wouldn't mind if the whole thing was SF-7, which before, the other developer that was going to build here was going to put half-acre houses across here, and he was limited to 19 houses. And the fire station was not a reason that they can't exit here for this builder. The reason was, is since this entrance was here and the urgent care was here, they would not allow another entrance into Warner between those two entrances. It had nothing to do with the fire station.
We can't see on the exhibit because it's being pushed forward a little bit. So, we know the general area, but...
Yeah, the fire station, that did not stop, that's not the reason you can't have a road. The reason you could not have the road is because of Gilbert's codes. You could not have another entrance to the highway from the urgent care to 130th Street. There would be too many entrances onto 130th Street. So that was dead whether the fire station was there or not. So I'm against going to the SF-6. I would not object to the SF-7 if they had the same buffer zone and tilted this street to where it was between the two houses instead of into my living room.
Great, thank you, Mr. Thorne. Yes, please.
Just a quick question. Sir, thank you for your comments. Did you, and we can certainly ask the applicant, did you ask them? I see your concern. I'm not sure we really talk about the streets and the zoning. That's more of a platting issue, I would think. But did you, I mean, this is just a general site layout. We're talking about the rezone. They put this up for ease. But did you talk to the applicant about maybe shifting the streets a little bit so the lights weren't hitting your window?
No, I have not. I didn't know who the applicant is, so I mean...
Okay. No, I mean, I'm not sure we can address that tonight because we're just talking about a rezone, not the plaque kind of sets forth the lots and the street configurations. But I think that's a valid concern.
Yeah, I know that...
I mean, I'm not sure how many houses it would have to go down to to go SF-7. I mean, does it mean four houses or what? I'm not sure. But I mean, when you put a 60-by-100 lot next to a 300-by-150 lot, I don't think that's viable. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Earlier, I had a quick question for you. Earlier, you mentioned three cars. You were kind of estimating at traffic.
Well, I mean, most people have, are married, wife, husband have a car and a teenage with a car. So you've got three cars per house.
I don't have three cars. We have two.
We have four.
Okay.
He has four. That makes it three each.
There's the average, the overall average. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Thorne.
Thank you.
Up next is Mr. Richard Garcia. If you could state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Richard Garcia.
Can you pull the mic to your...
My name is Richard Garcia, and I'm in Gilbert. And if I could have the other one up there prior to that one, the picture, if I may?
Sure, staff can help you. Yeah, it's upside down.
It's upside down, Maria.
Pull it down just a 10. There you go.
Perfect.
First, I want to thank the people for letting me share my comments. And I'm finally glad there's going to be something built on that field. It's been a nice store for years. And I'm really pleased with the landscaping along the road and on the inside. And I will share with Joe, R-6, way too small. But anyway, I disagree with the gentleman concerning the traffic. I live with it every day. My house, that's where I load and I unload my horses when I go riding. That's going to be an issue, I know that. Traffic, we get traffic from Cobble Creek, Templeton, Templeton here, Cobble Creek here. They go this way, avoiding Cooper Warner, but I'm not going to restate what he said. I guess my main point is White Fence Farms was, is the oldest white fence farms in Gilbert. It's like an historical place. We're an acre lot. We're zoned for livestock. We have, it's just a way of living that we're going to lose when we get housing of high density like that. I like the zoning. I mean, I like the gated community, but I think it's going to just cause too much traffic on 130th. As for me, where that exit's going to be, it's going to be right in front of my window, living room, the door, and one of our bedrooms. Now, I'm going to have to live with that. And if you had, if you guys live there, would you like that to happen to you? Now, if they do, I hope that you guys will, if they do go with it, that the developer helps me put up some kind of a guard, landscaping or something like that. Or if not, I'll build a four-foot wall clear across, and that'll be a nice store for everybody. But what it's going to cause, I still will load and unload my horse when I need to. So I beg you to consider the way we live and don't let them do that to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I think Mr. Commissioner Fuller has a question for you. Would you mind staying for just a second?
Sir, could I just ask you a quick question? You know, on the traffic issue, typically we hear the opposite. We hear people say, "This is a street that's rarely traveled, and now you're bringing people in, and now it's traveled a lot." It seems to me you guys are saying it's a busy street and it's going to get busier.
I will argue with that person because right now, we get people from Temple, Cobble Creek, they come along 130th. They don't just travel, they speed. So whoever tells you there's no traffic on it, I challenge them.
No, no, I guess that's my point. My point is typically we get people come to us and they say, "You're increasing traffic on a street that has no traffic." So the impact is huge, where you guys seem to be saying, "There's a lot of traffic on our street." And so the impact isn't as great because we're, in my mind, and feel free to correct me, you're just making a busier street. And I've driven this sub, I drove it over the weekend, there wasn't any traffic on it, but I drove it on a Saturday. You're making a busier street, a little busier, but the street's already busy to start off with. So that's what I'm having a hard time understand the traffic argument because it's not like you guys are saying, "Hey, look, this is a rural street. Nobody travels it, and now we're going to have 27 houses." What I'm hearing from you guys, there's a ton of traffic here, and which makes me less concerned about adding more traffic to already, an already trafficked street, if that's a verb.
Okay. Today, I left my house at 4:45. It took me every bit of five minutes to get onto Warner to go east.
To go...
4:45.
That was a right out, though.
I took a right, exactly. So someone trying to go west at that time, if he tries to go, you're looking for a possible accident right there. So it's going to cause a problem.
Okay.
Now, all I can say that it will create more traffic, and people are going to, either what they'll do, they'll either go down 130th to Nunley, to go out through Cobble Creek to avoid going west on Warner. Anybody going east on Warner, that's not going to be a problem.
Right.
Any other questions?
No, that's all I had.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate it. Are there any? Okay, Mr. Thorne, just a brief comment, hopefully nothing that's been raised before.
Well, Chad, your comment was like, "I have a full glass of water, and now I have another full glass of water, and I'm going to pour it in this glass of water, and it ain't going to make any difference because this glass was already full. You're going to have a mess."
I would take issue with the way you characterize my comment, but...
As I said, you already got a busy street, so what's a little bit more busier?
Again, that's not what I said.
That's the way I heard it.
Sure. And I certainly don't want to argue with them. Help me understand why, I was just explaining what we typically hear, so help me understand why my concern isn't valid.
And another concern was, I mean, the town of Gilbert, maybe about two years ago, did a study on that street. And they were just appalled at how fast the traffic was going down that street. I mean, and I don't know if you keep records on your studies or not, but town of Gilbert did it because we were looking to try to get speed bumps or something to try to slow the traffic down. But I mean, when you've got a congested intersection, you're going to throw another 80 cars into a congested intersection. It's a problem.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anybody additional in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? I don't have any additional cards. If you wouldn't, oh, Maria, do you have something to add?
Chairman Whitman and Commissioners, if you, the commission, have any questions on technical issues about traffic, we have the traffic engineer.
I was actually just going to invite him up before you asked to speak. So if you wouldn't mind giving your input and thoughts and whatever knowledge you may have with respect to the 130th Street, that would be great.
Chairman, Commissioners, Eric Giderian, the town traffic engineer. I've been the town traffic engineer for a year, so I wasn't aware of the speed study that was done previously. We did not require a full-blown traffic impact analysis for this development because it didn't meet the criteria for that, which is 100 peak hour trips generated. We do have a trip generation memo that was done by a consultant for the applicant to say how many trips that the site would generate, which is typically what we do for sites that don't meet that 100 peak hour trip criteria. On the highest peak hour, so there are going to be 27 lots. And so based on the best information we have, what we use is the trip generation study or trip generation manual says that there'll be between 30 and 35 peak hour trips, both, so total in and out of this subdivision during an AM or PM peak hour. So that's one trip in or one trip out roughly every two minutes. I think it's not a lot of traffic there. I understand the issue that there, it's a rural setting, there is traffic, but we're not adding that much traffic to the roadway.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Powell?
Is there some way to impede the traffic, slow it down a little bit so that it becomes safer?
There are ways, Commissioner Powell. I guess we currently have a traffic speed hump policy in town, and so we have to follow that criteria. And it has to meet that criteria. And also, our current policy is that the neighborhoods pay for those traffic calming devices.
Can you elaborate and tell us what that policy is?
Sure. The basic tenets of the policy, the main ones are that the roadway has over 500 vehicles a day on it, which I'm sure this probably qualifies, and that also the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that 85% of the drivers are driving at or slower or lower is 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So it basically says that 15% of the vehicles traveling on the roadway would be 35 miles an hour or higher. Those are the main criteria.
And if that criteria is met, then what?
Then there is a neighborhood petition process for people that live within 500 feet and 1,000 feet to see if they approve of that. Also, the neighborhood that's requesting it pays for the traffic calming, and then the town will take over all further maintenance of it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help. Any further questions for the traffic engineer? Okay. Thank you so much. I think the general order is, this goes back to the applicant and then to staff. So if that's okay, we'll invite the applicant back up for any rebuttal.
Chairman Whitman and members of the commission, I'll keep my rebuttal comments brief. We know that traffic is a deep concern to the neighborhood. I didn't mean to minimize that traffic by showing this aerial. What I was trying to demonstrate that was that there are alternatives for most of the neighborhoods. But the simple fact is that in my presentation, I mentioned that in 1979, when this project, when the white fence estates project was being built, there was nothing but farms around them. And I understand that those people now face this. And so obviously, when you have a number of subdivisions around you and you become the low-density enclave, and you're used to having Warner Road be two lanes, and now it's six and carries a great deal of traffic, and now 130th, which they used as their local street for their homes, now carries traffic from south of their neighborhood and to the west, I understand that there's more trips on that road. My point was, is that the number of trips we're going to add is fairly low. More importantly, not only is it low, but when you look at the location of our project and Warner Road, the exit of our cars is here, which is a very short distance to do any speeding. This is also a fairly short distance. In fact, we believe that because this is a vacant lot today, people have a tendency to go faster by it. When our cars are now pulling out and pulling in, that is slowing down to pull in and pulling out, it will have a calming effect on the traffic. It will slow traffic down generally. So we believe overall that while we can't eliminate the traffic that's already there, and if the neighborhood really wanted to have speed humps, we'd have to address that issue with the neighborhood as one of the new property owners. But we believe that this is a positive for the neighborhood. I think even some of the neighbors, Mr. Garcia mentioned that he was tired of seeing this be a vacant lot for the last, you know, 12-plus years, and that we do have good landscaping. The whole design here, I don't know if I brought that exhibit back up, but we really have tried to doll up this exterior entrance. In fact, we'll put up even more trees if it's required, if the commission thinks that what we've done isn't good enough. Because our idea here is, is to properly buffer the neighbors across the street so what they see from their homes is a beautiful wall with landscaping in front of it and are not interrupted by the homes behind it. And that the values of these homes will certainly not detract from their values. We know they have beautiful homes on... We know they have beautiful homes on acre lots, but these homes, while smaller, will certainly be every bit the value that they have and will eliminate this vacant lot. I know if I lived across the street from this vacant lot and the uncertainty associated with it and the commercial uses beyond it, that I'd be thrilled to have this project come into my neighborhood. And I've learned the different densities against my property, in fact, I just moved into Gilbert, as I've indicated, and the property just to the south of us is a different density. So, we're on half-acre lots, the property to the south has two lots for almost every lot in our neighborhood. So, we certainly understand that there's different densities and it's a question of having the value in your own property. So, glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, would you, now that we've had that neighbor comment about how lights would invade his privacy in his home, would you be willing to consider visiting with him to see how you might be able to alter that?
We're happy to sit down with that property owner and see what can be done. The exit, you can appreciate, where is that one exhibit that has the neighborhood on it? Probably, no, it's a blow-up of the project. Yeah, that's too many exhibits around here. You can appreciate then in a parcel that's 6.5 acres in size, the exit is going to deal with one of three homes. No matter where you put that exit, you're gonna be dealing with one of these three homes that are here. We tried to lessen the impact here by, even though that's a required entrance, exit, we made it an exit-only, so it would substantially reduce the amount of activity at that location. That's, I think, Mr. Garcia's home. Now down here, this is the entrance and exit, and so there is that required turnaround, so cars that come here that can't get in have, can make that turnaround. But this is the location of the street, so if you modify that entrance by trying to angle it up here, now you have a, and we have the Traffic Engineer here, you're angling the entrance to 130th, which is very challenging, but we're happy to sit down and see if there is ways that we can mitigate the fact that people who are exiting at that location may have lights shining toward their homes.
I think that would be a worthy consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, did you have anything? Okay. Commissioner Caveney?
Yeah, I think, my feeling on this is that this is an infill project that looks like it's well-designed. I would have liked to have seen maybe a little different buffer, but I know we've talked about this during study session, so I appreciate the applicant's efforts, I appreciate the homeowners coming tonight and weighing in. I think with any new development, especially infill like this, you're going to add some level of traffic and so it comes down to how can you balance that effect and make it work for everybody and I think there are uses that could add more traffic than this. So, the quality looks good, I think the infill opportunity here is well-done and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ayler has a question for you. I apologize.
I didn't even have my mic on. What's your average lot size?
Lot size is in the range of 5,500, right, to 6,000?
No. Can't be 5,500.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 6,000, my mistake, it's 6,000 to 7,000 square feet in size.
Right, but on average, is there more, are they closer to one side? Just, or is it just open, an idea?
It is a range between that, let me put up the subdivision again. You can see on this map that the lots are fairly standardized but, and the lengths are 115 feet in depth, but it is between 6,000 and 7,000 square feet.
Right, I'm just, I'm just looking that you're in between 6 and, you're not pushing the limit on FS6, you're between 6 and 7, so...
Correct.
I mean, I know there's no average zoning, but you're above the minimums of 6.
Correct, and we're below the maximum.
Right.
4.2 units per area.
Right, but I'm just kinda, the density isn't as tight as it could be.
That is correct.
And so, just looking at that for an FS6 versus going to 7, that we're kinda in the middle of those two, not towards the end of the other one. The other question I had, there was mentioned, staff said there was gonna be an emergency exit and is it a direct exit or is it an emergency exit?
We would like it to be an exit-only, not only emergency, because if that, if all the people who live up here have to come back down here to exit, it's just a little bit more challenging.
Right.
They could exit right here. We agree that the only entrance should be here.
Right, so...
We would prefer an exit-only, not just an emergency exit, in order to allow traffic to go out in both locations.
Is that still under discussion with staff or has it been approved?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, who are in the process of reviewing the preliminary plat, so we'll bring those up, the details at that level.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that the only reason that we're kind of honing in on this is, isn't this also a PAD request or is it straight zoning?
No, this is straight zoning.
Oh, you removed it.
Deviations, as opposed to the last case.
Right.
Just a quick comment on that. I think the concern is, if you were to make that an emergency exit-only, you would eliminate the concern of the home. I think they're more concerned about cars coming out of the subdivision with the lights. Obviously, the lights don't shine into those houses when they go into the subdivision, so if you were to make it an emergency exit-only, you wouldn't have lights going into that, that particular neighbor's house. Where exit-only you would, because people would be exiting from that location.
We appreciate the concern, we'd rather try and sit down with those two residents and see if there's ways of mitigating headlights.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you.
Ms. Kavie, did you have any, anything further to add?
No, Madam Chair, I think I completed my presentation and the clarifications made by the ER staff member. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and possible motion. Commissioner Powell, sorry.
I'm always happy to see quality infill projects, I think this is one of those. As I look at the map and it clearly shows 130, as it runs south, the buffer between the acreage houses becomes less and less as you travel down 130 toward Knox. And so I can appreciate the effort on the builder's part to have a wide and a beautiful buffer and I'm happy to see that. Also, I would like to encourage the town to reach out to the neighbors on this one and see if they could mitigate some of the traffic issues. And I'm happy to see that...
The town or the applicant?
Well, the Engineering Department from the town. I'd like to see the town reach out and see if they can visit with the neighbors and see if they can help mitigate some of the traffic issues, which I think was pretty well-defined by the engineer. And I'd also like to, again, encourage the applicant to specifically come to some workable conclusion with those two residents across the street to make it, to make it work for them.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
From a zoning perspective, which is what we're hearing tonight, not the plat, it conforms with the general plan. You know, we always, and I fall into the trap as much as anybody, we always get caught up in a site plan, which is interesting and kinda gives us an idea of what the project's gonna look like, but is mostly irrelevant at the zoning stage, especially when you're not doing a PAD. So, as far as zoning complying with the existing general plan, I'm in favor of it. I think there are some issues that I would encourage, as we heard earlier and we've talked about here tonight, I would encourage the applicant to reach out to the neighbors to discuss some of the issues we've heard tonight, because I think the plating will be a different discussion. I think there's a couple potential hiccups there, well, not hiccups, a couple challenges that could be addressed with some thoughtful site design. But yeah, it conforms with the general plan, I think it's good infill, it's transition zoning, I think it's appropriate.
Great, thank you. Vice Chairman?
I'm good with the recommendation that staff has provided for this infill project tonight. I differ from Commissioner Powell with the, I don't, wouldn't like to see speed bumps and I think that the neighbors would, the neighbors that are here and already living in white fence farms would hate them as much as the people surrounding there that use that street. They're very difficult on everybody's vehicles and I discourage that. I discourage people thinking about putting speed bumps into their neighborhood and on that street. I agree with the applicant that I think that people speed down there because there's nothing there. I know your homes are there and I get that, but people speed down there because there's nothing else there. It's wide open, it's straight, it's an easy go, so they just do it. And with more cars coming and going, it probably will slow people down. Yes, you'll get increased traffic, but if it went to a different zoning, you may end up with more lots. So I think the SF6 is a good alternative for this and I think the developer's really doing a great job to try and mitigate all of the issues and I know that they will work with you to solve the issues with the headlights into your homes the best of their ability, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
You know, when we saw this at study session, that was my initial reaction too, was, you know, SF7's already on the property, why don't we just keep it at SF7 and just change the SF15? But when we look at that, you know, I'm wondering what the comments the gentleman's made was, maybe SF7 might be a little less flexible because we're talking about deeper lots or wider lots and that provides maybe a little less flexibility when we talk about access and mitigating issues. And then when we come back to it, whether it's SF6 or SF7, it's well within the general plan density, so it's not an issue there. And similar to what Commissioner Fuller said, I would echo his concerns, or his points. It's well within the general plan density, it's straight zoning with no deviations requested, which I think is a welcome, is a welcome case. And then also, I think the gates actually are helping mitigate some of the issues with the neighbors, but I think the gentleman made a good point, the first speaker, about the access and the angles and I think it will be an interesting discussion if this comes back at the pre-plat to address that. But other than that, I am in favor of this.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ayler?
And just to piggyback a little on Commissioner Bianchi's, going to FS6 and 7, just doing a quick calculation, if we were just looking at FS7, we'd, they're well under the 40 lots that they could be at, but it creates more lot dimension changes, which makes less flexibility, which I'm really hoping the applicant can work with the neighbors and kinda work something. It's gonna be kinda hard to, on that angle, because you've got fire truck access and some other things, but I think there might be some workable things that they can do and we'll be looking at it at plat. But overall, as a infill property, I think it's well-designed. I think they've got a little bit to hash out when they deal with the plat itself, but I can really appreciate the landscape buffer, it's really gonna help the street and overall, I'd be in favor.
Thank you. I think, from my perspective, that rather than rehashing everybody's comments, I generally agree with everything everybody has said. I also feel that it's hard for, I think, infill pieces, because you never really know how they're gonna develop. And in this particular piece, in this instance, I've seen a lot of cases where it would be easy to extend the SC and build additional commercial, or it'd be easy to change, I think, this parcel to an office-type use, which would generate even more traffic and invite people who aren't residents into this area, which I don't think is necessarily what the adjacent residents want. And so, the lesser of the three evils, the four evils, whatever it may be, I think this is a good fit. I do, I know a lot of the Commissioners and some staff aren't as comfortable with gated communities, but I think that it provides a lot of diversity in Gilbert and I think that's what Gilbert is about, is to provide that diversity. And so I, I think the project is well-designed and I'm also grateful that the applicant is willing to meet with the adjacent residents, to talk through the design plan specifically, to see how it impacts them and see what mitigating factors they can incorporate and work with them on. So, for those reasons, I'd be in support as well. With that, do we have a motion?
Chairman?
Vice Chairman?
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend to the Town Council to approve Z13-13 as requested, subject to the conditions listed in this staff report.
I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caveney, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. With that, I hate to do this, but we'd like to take a five-minute recess. I know some of you have been here for a while, but so have we. We need a little break. We'll be back in just a minute.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're back at it. Mr. Morrison, sorry, you've had to wait a little while. I think we're on agenda item number 19 and 20, the general plan, or GP 13-6, it's a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 239.4 acres, generally located at the northwest corner of Recker and Warner Roads, and the companion zoning case. And with that, I'll invite Ms. Maria Katavide again.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is a 239 acres in the Morrison master plan. That is the last large residential development in the master plan, is to the west of Recker and Warner, and we are excited to be part of that proposal. The existing land uses are community commercial, residential 5 to 8, and residential 3.5 to 5. I'm going to use the exhibits in your packet, because I, my presentation in the slides, I used the wrong exhibit for the proposed general plan. So, in this, the first part of the request, which is a general plan amendment for the 239.4 acres, what we have now is three parcels, A, C, and E, 5 to 8, and two parcels, B and D, 3, 5 to 5, with the corner at the intersection for community commercial. Thus, our current general plan land use classifications distribution. What the applicant is proposing is to remove the commercial at the intersection, 8.2, I think, acres, and lower overall density by removing the 5, 3.5 to, the larger land use designation. And now, we're going to have four parcels that are 2 to 3.5, which is a lower density, and two other parcels, A and C, with 3.5 to 5. So, the overall acreage and land uses proposal lowers somehow the density that was, that we have currently in the general plan allocation of land uses. So, that is the general plan, minor amendment. We move now to the zoning, rezoning proposal. This is what we have in our zoning map now. The applicant has given just an excerpt of that zoning map, and we have parcels A, C, and E, with single-family detached zoning districts designation, and we have only one parcel, SF6, one SF7, and one SF8. The proposed rezoning will, will not have single-family detached, but the smallest lot parcels with the SF7 and SF6s, and only two of them are batting Lakeview Trails North, which also have SF6s along the north side, or the south side of that north subdivision. And we, they have increased the number of parcels with SF7 designation, and we also have an SF8. So, that is the boundaries of the zoning districts adjustment, arrangement, to correspond to the general plan new land use request. And in addition to that, the standard deviations that they are proposing, again, will be to increase the depth of the lots for all of them, reduce the side setbacks to 5 and 10, which is actually what the current LDC calls for in the SF6 and SF7, and reduce the width of the SF7 lots by 5 feet. When we say reducing, they are reducing from what their development standards call for in the original two ordinances that dictated what should happen in the entire master plan. So, with that, they're also requesting, and we need to hear from the applicant, that a 5% increase in the coverage of only the single-story houses. I think I have talked about that with the applicant, and I don't know if they still think that they can leave with what the code allows now, the new recently adopted ordinance that will be allowing even the builders, that will be the product, or the future property owners, to use that 5%, but only for the open-air structures, and that's what staff supports. So, with this, I think, is in summary what the applicant is requesting. The parcels that are vacant to the west remain general commercial. We're going to have these conceptual development plans, shows more specific, the lots layout on the different parcels. It also shows a lake number 3. That will be the one that will provide the reduced water for all the landscaping in the parcel on the Higley and Warner, and also for this parcel, once this come into place. It will be finished, all the improvements and all the aesthetics and landscaping, but this lake that you see is under review to be built in two phases, I think. The first phase to provide the irrigation and all the needs for the 150 acres that this commission recommended approval, and it will be completed once this portion of the Morrison branch gets built. Staff also, in regards to the removal of the commercial, doesn't really have a concern, because they have a lot more commercial, over 40 acres left after they remove that, and the reasoning behind the removal of that is that Recker stops, doesn't have the connectivity to the south, doesn't connect to either 202 or 260, I-60. So, they're concentrating their commercial efforts in marketing the Higley corridor, so we agree with that. Economic development doesn't have issues with that, and we accepted that based on the findings they presented to us. With this, I conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Katavide. Just for the record, Commissioner Fuller had a conflict of interest on this case, so he has removed himself from the discussion and the vote. But are there any comments or questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Maria. We appreciate it. Is the applicant here? Mr. Morrison, can you state your name and city of residence for the record?
Scott Morrison, Gilbert, Arizona. If I change my appearance in the next few minutes, it's because I'm turning into a pumpkin. Very, very briefly, if there are any questions about the removal of the commercial corner, I'd be glad to address them. Otherwise, this project is essentially Lakeview Trails North flipped over, but with the smallest lots of Lakeview Trails North, which were the 45 by 85-foot-deep lots and the SFD, I think, yeah, changed to SF6, 50-foot-wide lots by 115. So, it's, it's Lakeview Trails North, but with the smallest lots increased in size a little bit. That's the story. Otherwise, you're familiar with Morrison Ranch, and that's what we're building. We're doing this zoning and general plan on the residential portion. We're building a lake in commercial zoning. She's correct about it being in two stages. We will build a utilitarian water source early next summer for providing reclaimed water for Warner Groves to the west. We will landscape the area around the lake and create the park that you see around the lake with this project, and that will be in the preliminary plat that will cover both the zoning areas, but it's not in the zoning. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Commissioner Caveney?
Just a clarification. Last, during the study session, we talked about the 5% issue and how, yeah, please address that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Actually, there was a little misnomer about us only wanting the increased lot coverage for a single-story, but it didn't matter, because I knew where we were going. We are fine with straight zoning and the 5% open space plan. It was helpful for me to hear the explanation about the 80 square feet, but when we make the builders put front porches on the houses, those are open on three sides and, or two at least, and meet the criteria. And so, I think we're very much where we need to be with straight zoning lot coverage, knowing that we'll get the 5% of the new ordinance.
Perfect, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Generally, there's nobody left, and I don't have any cards to speak. So, with that, I'm assuming Ms. Katavide, you don't have anything further to add. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and possible motion.
You ready for a motion?
Absolutely, Mr. Bianchi.
I'd move to recommend to the town council approval of GP 13-6, minor general plan amendment.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Oh, 6-0, sorry, one abstention.
And are you set with the zoning as well?
Yes.
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I would move to recommend to the town council approval of Z13-14, as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Caveney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 6-0 to 1, one abstention. Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number 25. I don't think we've seen this many on an agenda in a long time, which is case Z12-12. It's a request to amend the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code glossary of general terms to amend the definition of political sign. With that, we'll invite Mr. Malillo up. And he hasn't turned into a pumpkin yet.
Thank you, Chair Whitman. Members of the commission, case Z12-12 is a request to amend the LDC, specifically the glossary of general terms, to amend the definition of political signs. And this particular item was initiated by the commission in November of last year, and just last month, in July, you received an update in another second study session, because you had requested during the initiation that some research be performed on other communities and what their definitions of political signs were and what their ordinances were with regard to political signs. Staff presented that to you. I was not here in July, but I understand Maria Katavide presented that information to the commission, and the commission made a variety of comments, which we've tried to summarize on page 3 of the staff report. Let me just go through the existing and the proposed definition here briefly. The existing political sign definition is a temporary sign which supports candidates for office or urges action on any other matter on the ballot of primary, general, and special elections relating to any national, state, or local election. The proposed definition with this text amendment would be a temporary sign related to a person running for public office, whether specifically named or not, a political party, or a matter to be voted upon at an election called by a public body. So, the new definition is broader than the existing definition. The commission, during last month's meeting, I think, made several comments. I just talk about a couple of them. One of those comments was that language in the proposed definition stating whether specifically named or not would potentially allow for additional signs to fall under the political sign regulations. Staff agrees with that. That the current definition is pretty straightforward, and it's similar to the definitions of political signs that we find in other communities in the valley. That, again, is true. And if a sign is going to be put in the public right-of-way, there should be a person or a group responsible for that sign. So, staff is basically in agreement with all of those comments made by the commission, and so the staff recommendation on this case is to deny, or recommend denial to the town council of the broader definition of political signs. And the reason for that really is that this would most likely result in a greater proliferation of signs, both within the right-of-way and also on private property. So, that is staff's recommendation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission has at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malillo. Any questions for staff?
No.
Commissioner Fuller?
Hey, Mike, was there, is there any change to the, the timing in this proposed amendment? Where, or have you looked into changing any of the, or is that governed by state statute as far as how early signs can go up and how long after elections they can stay up?
Chair Whitman, Commissioner Fuller, I'm sure that there are some provisions related to timing that are governed by the Arizona state statutes. We are not talking about amending any of the timeframes here. So, the timeframes for putting out political signs and the timeframes for taking them down after the elections have taken place will remain the same as they are in the code currently.
Thanks, Mike.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malillo. I had to open up to the public, but there doesn't appear to be anybody left but us. We do have one comment card. Thank you for reminding me, Bridgette, that was submitted. The person has left. It's from Mr. H. Stephen Johnson. Note said he's in favor of this item, does not wish to speak, and his comments are "political free speech is the most protected form of speech and should be given the widest berth." So, okay, and with that in mind, I assume staff doesn't have anything further to add. We'll go ahead and close.
The only thing I would add, Chair, is that I, we did receive an email today, which I sent to all of the commissioners in opposition to the proposed definition.
And that's in the file, I assume?
It is.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion.
I think we discussed it a lot last month, so I'm ready to make a motion if everybody's ready.
Let's do it.
I wasn't here last month. Can you just give me a little, a little foreshadowing of what that motion's gonna be?
My motion's gonna be what's written in the staff report.
Okay, so you're gonna agree with staff?
Yes.
I, I didn't know which way, 'cause I wasn't at the study.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here, and I urged everybody to read it carefully, and that I didn't think it was a good idea. That was my comments.
I concur.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion?
No, no, yeah, go. Fire away.
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend denial to the town council for Z 12-12, a text amendment to the zoning code of Gilbert to amend the Glossary of General Terms, to amend the definition of political sign.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Bianchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Agenda Item, the Commission, or the Communications Section of the Agenda. Item Number 26 is Report from Chairman and Members of the Commission on Current Events. Vice Chairman?
I just wanted to mention that the, I've been liaison from the Planning Commission to the Parks and Recs Open Space Master Plan, and we wrapped up with the Steering Committee and Technical Committee, and recommended the plan as it was presented to us at that meeting to, back to the Parks Board. They are taking it to the town council, I believe, at their annual retreat, and then we'll bring it to a town council meeting in the future. And the plan looks really good. The consultant worked really hard on it. There were a lot of open houses. I was able to attend a few, so it, it went really well. The process went really well.
Great, thank you. Any of the, any other items?
No.
Commissioner Bianchi?
I was just gonna congratulate our chairwoman on another term. I think it's very well-earned. You've done an excellent job. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Peterson for her help over the last year as well, and stepping up when we had a lot of new blood on the commission.
It was a pleasure to serve.
And I think our new vice chairman will, will do a wonderful job, so.
I agree.
Just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much.
I think he will as well do a good job.
To be more affirmative, he will do a good job.
There you go.
He will not let us down.
No pressure.
You just have to follow this act.
Right. It shouldn't be hard to follow. With that, Agenda Item Number 27, Report from Council Liaison Diana Daniels.
Thank you, and thank you to the entire commission for your staying power tonight. We appreciate all of your input and the recommendations that you forward to council. We take very seriously, and that's always one of the first questions out of, from our council communication, is what did Planning Commission think? So your opinions and your votes are very, very valued at the council level as well. Two things. Our annual council retreat is coming up August 23rd and 24th. We've actually spread it 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, just a couple different hours. That agenda will be posted online. If there's anything that you guys have an interest in, we invite the public to join us. We will also be recording, video recording, and televising certain, different parts of it that will be pertinent to the public discussion, and so that will be available for you as well. Also, this coming Thursday, August 15th, is our next town council meeting. One of the big things that's gone on this summer was fire chief interviews for our new fire chief to replace retired fire chief Colin Duett. And we are, it is being recommended to council on Thursday night that we confirm the appointment of Chief Jim Joe Bush as our new fire chief for the town of Gilbert. He has served the town long, and we're excited about, about his tenure as our fire chief. No longer interim, now our fire chief. So those two updates, and again, thanks for your efforts tonight.
Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 28, Report from the Planning Services Manager on Current Events, which we have Mr. Mike Malillo.
Chair, the Planning Services Manager is on vacation, and so there is no report.
Okay. That is the report.
That is the report.
The report will be next month. Got it. All right, well, thank you so much, everybody, for this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Thanks.